I don't know.
Yeah.
So you're talking about the Delta.
The rest of these.
It's quite simple.
Oh, yeah. Don't worry. It hurts like a bad ass.
Okay. That's actual.
So I think you might make them wait till then.
Thanks.
Really?
And they're still cold.
I gotta have some water.
Yeah.
What is the reason?
Good evening. Sorry we were delayed. We had three executive session items, so had a lot to deal with. All right. While I hereby call the 2273th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
I don't know.
Yeah, so you're talking about the Delta.
It's quite.
Oh, yeah. Don't worry.
Okay, that's actual. Good evening. Sorry we were delayed. We had three executive session items, so had a lot to deal with. All right, well, I hereby call the 2,273rd meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the covenant for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no special reports tonight, so we'll go right into consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the council meeting minutes of June 19th, 2018, work and regular session, and July 10th, 2018, study session. We have a resolution adopting the mayor slash council communication agreement. We have a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Clarkus Education Service District for Internet Services. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No.
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 I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm so moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None heard. It passed unanimously. Audience participation. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear citizen statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out the green speaker card available on the table in the hall and identify item number four, audience participation. This council has other business items on the agenda this evening. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during public comment may be new to some counselors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, are there any follow-up reports from the July 17th, 2018? Audience participation is over.
So the last discussion was actually about the Friends Street reimbursement district, and Norm Scott had come in and asked for all of you to reconsider. We had talked about the fact that we were pretty stuck within the ordinance unless you guys decided to do a big overview, overwrite. So I did meet with him. We had a great discussion. He came up with some recommendations of what he'd like to see. He understands there will be no renumeration back to him should we open up the code and fix it at a future date to his liking. I don't know if we will. When we talked to staff, they felt like we were still in best practice with other communities who have similar ordinances, but we'll review it when we do a rewrite of that portion of code in the coming two years.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right, first up, I have Vincent Alvarez. When you come to the podium, please state your name and city residence for the record, and you'll have three minutes, and you'll figure out the lights as we go.
I'm speaking as the NDA chairman.
Would you like more?
Yeah.
Okay, so six minutes.
Okay. And also, can I throw a USB drive into the laptop?
Yeah.
Just got some images. See, try this. Sorry, just a second. Not sure if it's seeing it. My name is Vince Alvarez, 12671 Southeast Werelts Lane in Milwaukee, Oregon, and I am the chair of the Lake Road NDA.
He's coming up. One second.
Try it this way. I got it.
I'll need to grab copies or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, it's always acid. Yeah, it's just a few pictures.
Okay, I'm gonna need to grab copies too. Let's do this.
G. Let's drive G now.
Okay.
There it is.
Before you sit down, I need to grab copies.
Nope, that isn't it. That's interesting. Okay, maybe I don't have pictures. Do they work fine on my computer at home? I'll describe them in vivid.
You could be Havana up there.
Yeah, I could add to mine. I could draw on the screen. Anyhow, what I'm here about is the islands that were installed in Lake Road as traffic calming devices. I live on Werelts Lane, which is the first island inbound into the city, which has had numerous wrecks over the past few years. The last one was about three weeks ago. We had a rollover when a car hit that, took out signs at either end of it and all the bushes. There's no longer a tree there because they haven't replanted the tree after, like, two accidents ago. They gave up, I think, on replanting the trees. The only markings on that island is the yellow paint on the end of it, on each end, and a couple of little yellow reflectors, and then, of course, the sign, one of those arrow signs that say, you know, you've got to go over to the right. And a part of the problem is, is you're coming into town, you go from a 40 to a 30 just before those islands, and then the inbound lane is jogs over. There's the island. The outbound lane, you can continue going straight. You could be asleep, and you just keep going out of town. Inbound, you have to jog over about five feet to avoid the island. And sure, I mean, if you're paying attention, that should be happening, but we've had, like I said, a number of accidents. I asked for a records request from the Public Works Department, and that was one of the things that was going to be on here, showing how many times they've been out there to replace signs, trees, bushes, and curbing. I can see a few things that might work to help that out. I mean, this last accident was pretty bad. It was a rollover accident. The guy was sitting on the curb. He wasn't hurt too badly, which was great, but I'm waiting. We haven't had a serious injury yet, but we've had completely totaled cars. Almost every one of the accidents has been completely totaled. And what I would like to see there is maybe flashing yellow lights instead of just the yellow reflectors. I use constant flashing yellow lights, maybe solar powered. I've seen those in other places in Portland where they just have a little solar panel on top of a post. It supplies some little strobe lights. That would be effective. The other thing would possibly be rumble strips. I mean, I know rumble strips, they don't like to put them in because of the noise factor to the houses, but just before that island is the old school district building and the new school district building across the street. So if you put rumble strips in front of those, that would be about 100 yards or so in front of that island and would give people a heads up that something is changing. And then the other thing might be a street light. The street light that's there is actually past the island, after you've passed the island, coming in, there's a street light, but it would be better to have a street light in front of that island. So as you're coming in westbound, the light would be, there'd be a little more light on what's changing because it's a little dark because there's a light in the back, and it's kind of confusing for me coming in. It's not very well indicated. And I just would like, I think the rumble strips would be cheap. Strobe lights, I think, couldn't be excessively costly. Moving a street light, I don't know how much that would cost, but we could try something. And I think we do need to try something because, like I said, Public Works shows multiple times of people of Public Works coming out there and replacing signs and bushes, and maybe the trees will get replaced again someday. But it's a problem waiting to happen. I'd like to see us do something about before somebody gets seriously injured or dies than afterwards.
So I also, the day when I was coming back down Lake Road, I saw somebody had hit that one of the islands coming uphill.
Going outbound.
They were outbound, yeah.
I guess some of those have been hit as well. I don't quite understand why that's happening because you're, there's multiples in there, and it's a kind of a, you're in the middle of it.
And it's a straight line.
I can see from the outside coming in, in the first one, but I, and I know some of, and I don't know what you can do about those. I mean, maybe a continuous island with no turn lanes, but that would kind of upset the neighborhood a little bit. But I just, I would like to see us try something, and I think rumble strips would be, I mean, the roads are already so rough that rumble strips are superfluous.
You're not even going to notice it, yeah.
Maybe a smooth patch of pavement. It's a thought. Just attempt something other, I mean, they were in it, Public Works was in it, and the very next day, both signs ripped out at each end, signs and concrete plugs, I mean, a chunk of concrete on each one, both were completely ripped out. And so, you know, Public Works is on the ball. I mean, they're right there. I guess they can depend on that if they ever need, you know, some hours, but I'd like to see if they try something, look at something there. Yeah.
Just before you leave, I want to confirm that you're talking about the island at 43rd?
Yes, it's the furthest one to the east.
Perfect.
Very first one, yeah. Right after Freeman.
Perfect, thanks. And then you'll send us photos.
Yeah, I'll send you photos.
Thank you.
She has it home, right?
Thanks, Vince.
Thanks, Vince.
Is that yours, Vince, the yellow?
No.
No? Okay.
All right, Howie Oaks.
Hi there. It's Howie Oaks on Southeast Stanley Avenue. Just wanted to make a couple of comments about my experience at Milwaukee Bay Park as a relatively new paddleboarder. My family bought some paddleboards in the fall, and we've been trying to get out on the Lamont as much as we can, and we're having a great time with it. But the park has been a little disappointing for access. And just looking at it, you know, it's clearly designed to be, you know, focused on powerboats. You know, there's 14 spaces for boats and trailers and three spaces for other people that want to use the park. So just looking at it, the last time we were there, there were, you know, a lot of people, a lot of traffic, a lot of people inflating paddleboards, moving kayaks, you know, trucks with trailers coming around, and it was, it was kind of a mess. So thought about it for a little bit, and, you know, I know that the ship has already sailed, so to speak, on the, on the parking lot as far as how many spaces are there. But I was thinking, you know, three things that could really help sort of allow multiple uses there. One would be maybe taking one of those spaces that's for boats and trailers and making that like a 10 to 15 minute drop-off space so that when people come down with a kayak or paddleboard or any sort of human-powered vessel, they knew they had, you know, could have a place where they could drop it off and then go find parking, because that's what you're doing. Right now, people are parking in the fire lane. They're pulling up on the curb. A lot of times, there's not enough room for, you know, for the boats, trailer, trailers to get around. So that's one, just having, reconfiguring the parking a little bit. It'd really just be moving a sign and putting another sign up, making a drop-off spot, I think, would help out a lot. The second one would be maybe associated with the new, the phase three of the riverfront, is doing a public access air pump for inflatables. You know, a lot of people that were there were inflating kayaks, paddleboards, river rafts, you know, giant swans, whatever they're gonna have out there. So having, and a lot of those people use electric pumps that are plugged into their cars, so if you don't have a place to park your car, you know, that's an issue. There are hand pumps, but I think a nice air compressor that could be built into the side of the building and soundproofed would really be helpful because there would be less stuff that you had to bring down. People knew they didn't have to bring a pump. They could just drop their stuff off, fill it up, and head out on the water. And then the other thing, maybe incorporated with the new bathroom or whatever structures that are going to be there would be some storage lockers that people could just bring their own padlock. So if they did have gear that they needed to bring down, bags or whatever, that they were bringing their stuff in or valuables, they could actually lock them up while they're out on the water to sort of minimize the traffic back and forth. You know, it would have been great if it had been sort of more designed with people that don't have powerboats in mind, but, you know, I think it is what it is, but I think these are pretty simple, you know, things that could, could make it better.
I have a comment, if I may. If you go to the city's website, right now, there's a survey up about Milwaukee Bay Park and what, in fact, I think we have a page called Milwaukee Bay Park, but go to the city's website and, and search Milwaukee Bay Park. There's a survey up about what would you like to see in the park, how would you like the park to feel, what kind of activities might you do there, so on and so forth. So I would, I would encourage you and any others that are listening to that to take the survey so that we can get a good read from the community.
May I also just make one comment? We are actually putting up some stands for kayaks so that you can leave your kayaks and lock them up while you park your car. Those are being installed now. They're not actually a part of the next phase of the park, so we're doing that as a part of the beach repair and the bridge repair. So just as a heads up, you'll need to bring your own lock, but that will give you an option for leaving your kayak on site while you go. Brooke. Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Howie. All right, that's all I have for this portion. Anybody else? Going, going. All right. Item 5A, declare Harrison and Main Street property to be a surplus for purposes of redevelopment a resolution. The public hearing on the disposition of the city-owned property located on the Harrison and Main Street property at 10700 Southeast McLaughlin Boulevard initiated by the city is called to order. Purpose of this hearing is to consider the disposition of real property owned by the city and held as a tenant in common with Metro. Does any member of council wish to announce an actual or potential conflict of interest?
I would like to announce a potential conflict of interest. As I've stated many times before, I work at Metro and I work at the Metro Attorney's Office, and my colleague did help work on this. We've made it a point at the Metro Attorney's Office that I have zero to do with anything related to this project, so I don't have any inside information, but I will recuse myself just because of the potential conflict of interest.
Okay, does any member of audience wish to make a challenge to any council members' impartiality or ability to participate in this decision? All right, then staff report. Leila.
Hi, good night, good evening. Leila Amman, city's development manager.
Pam McLaughlin, Metro TD program.
And this is not deja vu. We have been here before. Just a slightly different piece here. So we're here tonight to talk with you about declaring our interest in common that we have with Metro on their side of the property. But just to remind folks that when we were here before, we declared the property that we own outright, which is on the eastern portion of the block, surplus on March 20th. As we went through and started our due diligence, we learned that, and at that time, just to remind folks, too, the council adopted development goals for the solicitation process. So Patrick and I have been working on that, and as we conducted our due diligence, we learned that Metro had actually granted 5% interest in their property to the city of Milwaukee. So a review of the title report and some deeds brought that up, and we thought it would be prudent to go through a similar process in terms of our interest to just be very clear and transparent about what our ownership status is in that project. In addition to that, when we reviewed the deeds for these properties as well, we learned we had a little bit of a remnant property as well adjacent to the site, so we're asking to declare that portion surplus as well. And so for our end, it kind of takes every bit of ownership that we have and puts it through the surplus process, which seemed like the appropriate route to take. So that's what we're asking for tonight, is to declare our interest in common with Metro's property as surplus. So as you know, Metro owns half. We own 5% of that interest, and this is the, the remnant property, which is just right on the corner of Harrison and McLaughlin.
So that's not right away. It is an actual separate piece of real estate.
Actually a piece of property, yeah, yeah.
How does something like that evolve?
Apparently I gave one of our city attorneys PTSD for having to review this, but I thought it was really important that we stay on point. So I don't know how these things evolve. So that will be part of it as well. And then we will have one, one complete piece of property. I also thought it would be good to give everyone an update as to where we are in the solicitation process as well. We've pushed out our RFQ release to align with the bid process for South Downtown, and the purpose of doing that is to ensure that we are aligned, we are aligning this development process with the move of our farmer's market. So we wanted some certainty around when that will happen. And my understanding is that we will be doing, we will be releasing a bid sometime in mid-August, and so we feel that we have enough certainty now to highlight that in the timeline for the RFQ. It's really important for our potential development partners to understand what the timeline is. So we expect to release that RFQ sometime in September. So the steps that we've taken in terms of disposition is what is required by law for us. We are holding a public hearing. We published notice on August 1st, and then that's been on Oregon Live for the last week. And we mailed property owners within 300 feet of Harrison and Main on July 30th a notice. And I do want to point out, Gary Klein was very helpful and let me know. We had a bit of a typo in our first notice, so we re-noticed it, and I'm grateful for that. And then we also sent it to a couple of his adjacent neighbors, which are outside of the 300 feet, but actually do own a piece of property along, along that road there. So we were very thorough in our notice the second time. And then we will conduct a market value appraisal prior to sale. So with that, the action that we're requesting is that you approve the resolution declaring our 5% interest in common with Metro and that remnant piece of property on the corner of McLaughlin and Harrison surplus for the purpose of redevelopment.
Any questions? Have we received any correspondence on this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Except for what was disclosed from Mr. Klein.
Yes, yes.
About the typos and whatnot.
Which he personally delivered, so.
Cool. All right, thank you. Cool, all right, thank you. Well, does anyone wish to comment on the proposed resolution? I do have a card by Gary. Anybody else want to fill one of these out to comment on this? I will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through me. When you come to the testimony table, please state your name and city residence for the record. Since we have other items on the agenda this evening, I encourage those speaking to confine their remarks to the proposed resolutions and avoid repetition and irrelevant information. I will now call those who wish to speak to the testimony table. Gary, come on up.
Gary Klein, 10795 Southeast Riverway Lane, Milwaukee, Oregon. I'm within, some of my properties within the 300 foot barrier, so of course I get information about this. Plus, I'm on the land use committee for Milwaukee Historic Neighborhood, so I get information from them too on things. Anyhow, I have a concern for this, I'm neutral on it. I'm more, I'm more than neutral, I'm actually in favor of developing it, but what I wanted to bring up this time was just a real brief little history of the area and then make one point. Of course, the McLaughlin widening that we did over 10 years ago, took out buildings on the west side of McLaughlin, and the park was expanded in that area. And then, of course, the Texaco Station was taken off on the lot, half lot, with the city parking on the other, so there's nothing there right now. And the big point of all of this is that traffic has increased on McLaughlin from where it was 10 plus years ago also. So the key thing I'm talking about is noise. Where I live, the noise in McLaughlin is substantial at night. No buildings block the noise like they used to, and so it comes my way and into my neighborhood. So my concern is just pointing out a concern, whatever we build there, I don't want it to be a sounding board, revibrating everything straight at me, because it's two blocks from my house and there's nothing in between, and so whatever happens and you put there, I'll know it. It's amazing how noise travels around water.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Gary.
Any questions or comments? That's all I wanted to say about it. And I was on the committee last time, I, whether I am on the committee again, I'll go to all the meetings about it, and I plan to.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, does council have any questions about anything?
No.
So far? All right. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing.
I move to close the public hearing. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing portion of this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Public testimony portion of the hearing on the disposition of the city-owned property located on the Harrison and Main Street property at 10700 Southeast McLaughlin Boulevard is hereby closed. Is there council discussion? I would just note for staff, when we do the RFQ, a little note about sound reflection properties of exterior materials and design, wouldn't go amiss. Because Gary's not the only house that's gonna pick that up. Well, then, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution to declare the city of Milwaukee right title and interest in 10700 Southeast McLaughlin Boulevard, Milwaukee, Oregon 97222, consisting of an undivided 5% fee title held as tenant in common with Metro, a municipal corporation, subject to all encumbrances on record, and declare the remnant property 64.28 square feet of real property owned by the city of Milwaukee on the northwest corner of Harrison and McLaughlin surplus for the purpose of redevelopment and to authorize the city manager to move forward with the property solicitation. A second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to declare the city of Milwaukee right title and interest in the 10700 Southeast McLaughlin Boulevard, Milwaukee, Oregon 97222, consisting of an undivided 5% fee title held as tenant in common with Metro, a municipal corporation, subject to all encumbrances on record, and declare the remnant property 64.28 feet, square feet, I assume that is what that means, of real property owned by the city of Milwaukee, on the northwest corner of Harrison and McLaughlin, surplus for the purposes of redevelopment and to authorize the city manager to move forward with a property solicitation. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, it passes 4-0 with one abstaining. Well, you recused.
Yeah.
I guess that's abstaining.
How quickly one forgets, yeah. Sorry about that.
That's that. So, next item up is to establish comprehensive plan Block 1 policies of resolution. The public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan Block 1 policies is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed comprehensive plan Block 1 policies. This will be introduced by our senior planner, David Levitanton.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members, David Levitanton, senior planner. So we are here tonight, basically, to what we're calling pin down the Block 1 goals and policies by resolution. As you may recall, at previous council meetings, in discussing the work plan for the project, our plan is to, we've broken up the work into three blocks of work, and we will be essentially adopting resolutions, pinning down the topic areas, the policies for each topic area within that block of work by resolution, and then at the conclusion of the three blocks of work, doing a synthesis stage, after which time we will be adopting an ordinance adopt, to update the entire comprehensive plan. So, just a little bit about Block 1. I'm gonna go over this really quickly, just because we've all seen this before. There are four topic areas, community engagement, economic development, urban growth management, and history arts and culture. They all exist within the current comprehensive plan, with the exception of the history arts and culture section will be new. There is a section within the land use chapter, I mean, within the resources chapter on historic preservation, but the arts and culture component will be new. A little bit about our process in community engagement over the last eight months. We formed a comprehensive plan advisory committee, and we've had five meetings with that group. They've been incredibly helpful in providing, you know, just incredibly input in helping to synthesize the goals and policies.
And then, I was just gonna say, and a number of them are here today?
A number are here this evening and are available to provide commentary as they, as they choose to do. I'd love to hear from them if they would like to. We had a highly successful town hall on April 4th, over 100 people attended that. We had an online survey at the end of May, and then we've had a couple of work sessions, one with the city council on June 19th, and then two with the planning commission, one on May 22nd, and another on June 26th. We've also been working internally with different departments to make sure that we have perspective from the city manager's office, from other places within the community, community development department, as well as other departments, to kind of vet these policies and see how they, you know, the implementation of them, you know, would play out, and if they have any concerns. We were last before you, as I mentioned, on a June 19th work session. Since that time, we met with the, we had our fifth and final comprehensive plan advisory committee meeting for the first block of work, where they provided additional comments, which we then turned into a draft of CPAC recommended goals and policies. After that time, we met with the city manager, the assistant city manager, and the community development director, to discuss those recommended policies and see, kind of discuss any comments that they had. And the attachment three in your package shows the track changes as far as the changes that have been made to the policies since you last saw them on June 19th. Just, if I can, as far as talking a little bit more about the CPAC recommendation, so there are, as noted in the staff report, there were a few areas where, based on comments from the city manager's office and from the community development director, where we did make some slight refinements. That's kind of discussed in detail of that. A lot of that was specifically related to community engagement goal two and the underlying policies within there. Those changes were made, basically, there were concerns regarding kind of the scope of the comprehensive plan, and that there was a little bit of scope creep as far as some of the policy language was going above and beyond what the traditional role of a comprehensive plan is, and especially what the role of the planning commissioner would be in serving in a community involvement advisory committee. And so we got some really good input. The city manager then reached out to several CPAC members to discuss, you know, the rationale behind some of those changes, and it seems like the CPAC is completely on board with those, so. Speaking of the CPAC, there are several here tonight, I wanted to just kind of point them out for recognition. We have Albert Chen, Howie Oakes, we have planning commission chair, Kim Travis, who's here with her daughter, so I apologize for saying we'd be out of here by 6:45. That's what we have for the CPAC, and then obviously, we, we really appreciate the hard work that council president Beatty and Mayor Gamba have done as well, and as, work, in that work as the council liaisons. So we are here tonight requesting that you adopt a resolution that pins down the proposed Block 1 goals and policies. We did make a slight refinement to the resolution following consultation with our city attorney. We had used the term interim policies, and there were some concerns that, that might still convey that we're kind of adopting these, and so we have changed interim to proposed in three places within the resolution. I have a track changes version here that I can pass out. And with that, I guess, before you make a motion regarding the resolution, we would just like to see are there any goals or policies that still need to be further refined? As I mentioned, the most substantial changes were to community engagement goal 1.2.
I guess my question was, maybe that you want to clarify about the, I mean, what pinning down is, and that we're, the synthesis, that, that this language may not be the same at the end of the synthesis.
Yeah, so, sorry that I didn't get into that too much. So basically, our, our thought process for this is, because we're not doing every single chapter, every single topic at the same time, you know, we're basically, we're, we're quote unquote pinning these down by resolution to kind of establish them essentially as drafts, kind of proposed policies. We totally understand that as we move forward with other topics, there's going to be housing topics that, you know, have impacts on economic development or even on community engagement. There's going to be kind of climate change and energy that deal with development and housing, and so we didn't want to have those set in stone. So at the conclusion, once we've done the three blocks of work, we're gonna have a full six month synthesis period where we discuss and kind of move things around and reformat and reassess, and so there will be additional opportunities for people to comment even on these policies that have been quote unquote pinned down. So with that, I would open it up to any questions?
I do, I, it seems, and I'm sorry I didn't catch this before, but I was just reading through them again, sort of in this format, and it seems like we've got a couple of, that are conflicting. On pages RS 47 to 48, policy 10 dot 1 dot 4 talks about diversifying, sorry, I'll let you catch up. 1014, diversify the city's local businesses and traded sector industries in an effort to strengthen economics resiliency in the event of a natural disaster or economic collapse. 1032, 10 dot 3 dot 2, focus recruiting and marketing efforts on businesses that can capitalize on existing Milwaukee business clusters, groups of businesses in the same industry, or serve on identified community need. So, I mean, I, I don't know if these are, just seems like sort of big picture as policies, they're in a little bit of a conflict.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, it largely comes down to the verb choices and just the, the budget that we have, especially within the economic development department, as far as the resources, resources that they can dedicate specifically to recruitment. I think as far as 10.1.4, we would love to continue to diversify that, and when you have an economic development strategy, it's a very kind of short-term model, it's typically on kind of a five-year period, and those change over time. And so when we're, I think this is somewhere where kind of the language within it, I can understand there might be appearances of conflict, I think it's where the timeframe's more so kind of conflict as far as one deals more with kind of the economic development strategy, and one is looking more out at that 20-year horizon. So if it can be clearer that one is kind of dealing on that kind of more short-term nature, and one is dealing more with kind of that 20-year horizon, we would be open to changing that, and if you have specific language, we can, we can.
I don't at this time, but we are just pinning down the general, but.
I also sort of see that one as, as one is kind of a focused part of another, not so much in conflict, but it's just sort of calling out of a sort of subsector. That's kind of the way I read it when we were working on it. But it'd be great, I'm gonna have one too, so it'd be great for some of you that are on the committee to fill out green cards, so you can come up and we can sort of get your feelings on some of these that we bring up, too. Any thoughts, or anybody else have one before I?
I guess I would, yeah, I mean, I would say, I guess I saw it the way you did, that they weren't in conflict, but they are sort of two different focuses, but, I mean, I can see how they're read as conflict, I mean, I can see how they can be read as a conflict.
It could be made clear. So mine is on RS 48, urban growth management, policy 14.1.1. It says, maintain the urban growth management agreement with Clackamas County as an effective tool to guide planning and growth management decisions in the area provided, surrounding Milwaukee. And both because of my familiarity with that current process and agreement, and also because later, further down, it starts to talk about things that actually need to be changed or improved in that process, I would suggest perhaps we, rather than maintain the urban growth management agreement, we say something like pursue a better urban growth management agreement with Clackamas County.
Better than what? Would it be a strong?
Better than what ours is.
Right, or?
I think that the idea here is that this is a 20-year document, and maintain was written purposely, that word was picked so that it would work after we have revised the urban growth management agreement. There's no question we need to revise the urban growth management agreement, and there are some other policies in there that even drive us that way or suggest that. So, maintain is just, was written, this, we don't adopt this for two more years, hopefully we are, or year and a half, I hope. Hopefully, at that point, we are also working on an urban growth management agreement or getting it finalized, or maybe even be done with it by then.
Well, that was my question, is there a chance we'll be, have a new one before this?
If it can be done, then I'm, then I'm good with this language, if it's, if it's something that, that remains to be done. And, and the other thing that I would.
It absolutely did.
Maintain sounds like we've got a good thing going, and we should move forward with that good thing.
That was not the intent.
And I would say that A, we don't at this point, and B, there's in all likelihood going to be ongoing changes through that 20-year period. So, I'm just, something a little more dynamic or a little more active, I guess, than maintain.
Let us, I mean, I understand completely, and it, it was the idea that picking the verb often, you, you wanted to put, pick a verb that is an ongoing verb, and not one that once we have revised it, you know, then you've got that language in there, it says revise the urban growth management agreement, and you've, five years from now, you're going, what, what does that mean? We did it three years ago. So, yeah, so I, but I understand what you're saying, and maybe there's a better way of wording it. it.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that, sorry, I'm not remembering it. Is Clackamas County the only other party to that agreement or I thought?
It is because, we would have those kinds of agreements with, with, we also have a similar kind of agreement, not really, with Portland. But it's, it's different because we are meant to eventually incorporate portions of Clackamas County. We are not ever meant to eventually incorporate portions of Portland.
Right, I guess I thought there was some discussion about Metro having obviously some involvement in that process and our agreement wasn't with them.
We did, actually.
Right, so I guess my question is more to, should this actually reference Metro as, as they should be a party to this agreement?
That's probably true.
Good question.
Can we add that to? We'll work on that. Get back to you.
That's right. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Do you, any of you?
Sorry, I did have one other question if I can just jump to it. 14 dot four dot five under annexation requi- on RS 49.
Got it, yeah.
Require annexation where properties receive or utilize city services. My only question about that is with letting library or service area is outside of city limits, including properties that are currently in the UGMA.
But isn't that structured with a district library?
But it's just the language.
But the way that it says is that at this point, once this gets adopted, it means that we're going to require everybody who is part of the letting library service area to annex.
She is correct.
But I also think that.
But I like that concept.
Right. So I just want to make sure that that's the, I mean, that's how I read that. So if that's our intent, then okay.
So is, is the library district fall entirely within our UGMA?
I am guessing that you have a little bit that runs to the south as well. And it is, it's 41,000 people, so it's substantially bigger than just our UGMA.
Like, the boundaries aren't perfect. I wouldn't, I wouldn't conceptually say it's the same.
Yeah, okay. Maybe city.
So we're good with that?
No, that needs to clearly change. So is it city utilities?
Yeah, did we mean utility? I just need to add that word in. I don't think of us annexing the entire library district by any means.
Or just requiring it like that. I mean, that's the way that language reads to me, if we can just work on.
Well, I mean, all of that annexation stuff is a 20-year, is a distant horizon. None of that is, is imminent, right? So, I don't know, I'm okay with it. I'm personally okay with it the way it is.
As a special district, they're probably called out separately anyhow, somewhere.
Well, they are, but it's just the way it reads. It's a service that we're providing.
Well, and I mean, and there may be.
Providing a city service or are we providing a, or is it a district service?
There are employees, so we're definitely providing a city service.
Yeah.
We'll come up with some clarifying language just about what utility we're talking about.
Okay.
Unless you really don't want to.
You can't use your library card unless you sign a remonstrance.
Well, that's interesting because, yeah, I know people who are in Portland who have a library card and use their library.
Be a very clever way to start annexing all these people. They come in to sign up for their library card and that also.
There's a new little clause.
That's them annexing right there.
Yeah.
Like voter.
Any others?
Yep.
That's all I have.
Anything else, anybody?
Before we close down the conversation, I just wanted to take a moment to talk about how much time and effort staff has placed into this process. It's been exceptional. It's convoluted, it's hard, it's hard to get so many parties to the table. And I really have appreciated both David and Denny and Mary actually for working so hard at trying to balance all of these differing opinions and, and create something that really drives us forward. And I think they've done that, so I just wanted to call it out.
Well, and in that vein as well, I think the committee members have been extraordinary. They've done, they've done a lot of hard work, they've done a lot of reading, and they have really addressed this. They've, they've, there's been some really deep, interesting conversation and trying to parse the difference between what's a comp plan and what's a vision is tricky because they really overlap a lot. And it's, it's been a lot of good, hard work, so I can appreciate them.
And we've kept them for long hours. I mean, our meetings are routinely three hours and other than the planning commission and the council, that's not the usual meeting length for a city committee. So we really appreciate them putting in the long hours.
Definitely. So it sounds like, so we have the, the three comments that you provided, so we'll, we'll provide language. It sounds like we are not going to be immediately expanding to a city of 41,000, so some clarifying language on that and then the other two policies as well. And then I think we can bring that back and unless you'd like to hear another presentation, we probably could put that on the consent.
So I'm going to just bring this up because one of the counselors mentioned it. So we will be going through an election process between now and when this document will be adopted. So the pinning, just so everybody's clear, does not lock these in. There will be a discussion at the end for actually locking these in, but I think it's our way of saying, we've, we've hit a milestone, we've documented that milestone, and the community has put a lot of time and effort into that milestone.
I think it also provides another opportunity for this, for public input. And I think that that's just something that this, this council and our staff are really, really, really doing well. And the volunteer efforts that go into this, you know, at each point where we're discussing this or the, you know, the group, I mean, you had the slide dedicated to how much public process there's been, you know, that's another point for someone to be able to come in and give us their thoughts on, on these things. And so having a public hearing on this was actually unnecessary. As I was reading through this, I was like, we actually don't have to pass a resolution on this. But then I realized it's just another opportunity for folks to come in and talk about it. So I think in the end, it's a good idea to do it. So, thank you.
So we'll place this on consent, just with the pinning down for the next meeting as soon as they're ready.
Okay, before this, I want to, before we leave this, I want to see if there's anybody from the committee or anybody else for that matter that wants to comment on any of the thoughts the council's had tonight. Any heartburn, any agreement, anything? We're all good?
Nobody's jumping up and down.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Did we receive any correspondence on this?
We did not, no.
Okay. And no one wishes to comment? So do we want to continue this to a date certain? How do we want to?
It's, I mean, it's not a land use hearing, so we don't have to do that.
Don't have to do that.
No, but I think we can probably, these are minor changes. We should be able to get this on consent for August 21st.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to continue it?
Yes, I would entertain a motion to continue.
It wasn't till date certain?
We don't have to.
It's going to be on our consent agenda, so do we, are we?
I'd make a motion to.
Are we closing the public hearing?
To continue the public hearing on the proposed comprehensive.
I think we.
Just close the public hearing and call, and that's it.
Yeah.
That's all we have to do.
I move to close the public hearing on proposed comprehensive plan block one policies.
I'll second that.
Has been moved and seconded to close public testimony portion of the public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan block one policy. There's any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And unheard? Public testimony portion of the public hearing on the proposed comprehensive plan block one policy is hereby closed. All right.
Thanks to you guys who came.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For what?
Okay, you want a motion to continue? Okay.
Why do you need to continue?
Do we need to?
It's not really a land use hearing.
It's not a land use, they can schedule only one.
I was typing, not thinking.
Yeah.
All right. We have the Spring Park Nature Area and update, and this will be presented by our assistant city manager, Kelly Brooks, and folks from the Clackamas, or North Clackamas Parks Recreation Tanya, to be specific.
I can make that bigger or not? Okay, good evening. I am Kelly Brooks, she assistant city manager. And I'm joined tonight by Tanya, who's with NCPRD. She's the Natural Areas Coordinator, I believe that's the right title, if I get that right. And we are here tonight to talk about the area that's on the screen. So, and I don't have a long presentation for you all. I want to make sure there's quite a few people here tonight that have a lot more experience and history with this area than I do. Make sure that they have time to talk with you all. But what you're looking at here is a photo of the Spring Park Nature Area, or Spring Park to the north, and then the black line that does kind of a jog and then a house. Everything north of that line is actually city property. And you can tell from the aerial photo that much of that area is mowed today in the front. And, and so what I want to talk about is not every, the reason why we're here is we've had concerns expressed multiple times throughout the years from the Island Station neighborhood about encroachments into the park space by the private property owner. And, and so I'm not going to itemize all those encroachments tonight. I mentioned some of them in the letter. We've had a lot of correspondence with the landowner over the years. Many of those issues actually have been addressed, items have been moved. The last real detailed correspondence we had around encroachments was in 2012. There's not been further correspondence that I'm aware of.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Why are some of the corners black and some white?
That's a good question.
Yeah, what does that mean?
I was looking at that earlier, okay. I thought, I thought there was a certain reason for that.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. If someone knows and I can get that info, I'll come back up and share it with you. But I don't know.
It's possible that that's where there are monuments, but.
Oh, maybe.
But look at where the dock is, there's two white dots.
But they could have put, it's, you know, unusual to put a, yeah.
So just to get you caught up a little bit too, we did, and the neighborhood association had asked, due to these ongoing encroachment issues, could you do an updated survey of the property line? And so we did commission that survey. The survey was completed and filed with the county just after the first of the year. Those survey results were largely consistent with surveys that we'd had previously, but we do have updated survey information for the property. So at present, it's actually quite difficult for anyone to know when they're leaving the park and entering, like where the actual property line is because it's not really demarked in any way. So that makes it difficult for our police officers if there's trespassing complaints, if they get called out to kind of say, hey, someone's trespassing on my property, to actually go out and really know where that private property is. It's hard for park users to know really where they can and can't be. And so for that reason, what we've talked about as a potential solution to this, this ongoing conversation is, would it be beneficial to actually delineate the property boundary in some way, to make it easy for people to see? And so that's why I have NCPRD here with me tonight is just to talk about if you were going to take that step and you wanted to delineate the boundary, what would be the most prudent way to do that? What material would you use? How would you go about doing that? I will say, just in terms of, I've told you the, the neighborhood associations kind of concerns in terms of the encroachments that they see into the public space. We, as a city, have had communication with the landowner over the years about the private landowner concerns. Those have largely been about crime and fire. And so there has been some intentional, or there's been some allowance of the mowing and kind of no trespassing signs. Other things have been in place to help signal to park users that you're starting to enter into private property. So there has been some conversation about that over the years as well. But for tonight, the, the purpose would be, it's been a longstanding kind of dispute, or not dispute, but discussion between two property owners. Good fences can sometimes make good neighbors. Do we want to delineate this boundary? I will tell you, a fence doesn't work because it floods. And so a fence, a fence can catch debris, it's just not the right course of action. But I will leave it up to Tanya to tell you what the right course of action might be if you wanted to delineate the boundary.
So you said there, there had been issues with crime, what arrests or what crimes were charged?
I don't have the full incident report here with me tonight. I can give you that from Steve Barthol. I, and so in terms of giving a full accounting of incidents, I know there's been quite a few calls, but again, it's pretty difficult to enforce some of the trespassing calls because it's not clear.
It's trespass crimes, it's not.
I think there's been.
It's not just trespassing crimes, there's also been items that have been removed.
That property have been stolen from the property and those have been detailed in police reports.
Yeah, I can, I can provide those to you if you'd like, but yes, I'm sorry, it's not just trespassing, there's been theft.
This photograph, when is it from?
I do not know. Tanya told me today that it's pretty clear that it was taken during a high water time of year, but the exact date of the photo, I'm not sure, but I can get that for you.
It's not a part of the recent survey though, right? This is something we had in our files from years ago or something?
I got it when I got the survey information. When the survey was commissioned, the survey was given to me with this photo, but it wasn't date stamped.
Okay, thank you.
So do we think the surveyor provided, the surveyor provided this photo?
I don't believe the surveyors provided the photo. I believe it was a way to interpret the survey results however, so I think it was fairly recent, but I don't have the date.
Okay.
So, but I bet some of the folks staring at it right now probably might have an idea of the, the time as well. Do you have any other questions before I turn it over to Tanya? Okay.
So, NCPRD was asked to come up with some ideas of how to delineate the boundary. And if you look at this, this is definitely more in the spring because you can see a lot of the vegetation is green. And when you look at photos from later in the season, not only is the water down, but the vegetation does dry out. And, you know, both at Spring Park and Elk Rock Island, we are concerned about fires primarily not because of like lightning strikes as much, but because there are some visitors who sometimes don't follow the rules, the park rules, and do light campfires, especially down at the beach. And so in, in one of our plans, in one of our management plans, we had suggested a hedge row on the south boundary. And that was primarily recommended that we plant spiky vegetation, native vegetation as more of a boundary delineator to kind of, not only visually, but also to kind of keep visitors on our own property and not trespass. But after thinking about it, you know, some of those areas are rocky and dry soils and it's, might not be as easy to maintain those plants in those areas. And, you know, maintenance would be a little bit more difficult. And so we thought of the idea of putting boulders along the boundary line on the north side of the, the park. When we did the development project, we used boulders and logs to delineate an overlook area. And it was, it helped delineate the overlook. The idea was to give a place for visitors to have to, to view wildlife, but it was delineated. It was clearly delineated so that people wouldn't basically trample other areas that we were trying to revegetate. So the thing is, is when we developed the, the trail, we kind of got rid of our access point for an excavator to come in and deliver boulders. So we would have to have boulders delivered via the river. So we would most likely have to have them dropped off at Milwaukee Bay, barged up with an excavator and placed along the boundary. But because this area is within the floodway, we had the same issue on the north side of the park when we developed that side. That was what was permissible. As Kelly said, fencing was not easily permitted because within the floodway, you have a lot of debris that would catch on that fencing. So it, it's also that it, you can't ignite it, the boulders and. So, it's also that you can't ignite the boulders, and we could... You can't move them very easily. They can't be chopped and killed very easily. So I think that they would be a good way to delineate the boundary.
And how close together would you put them?
You could place them from 10 to 20 feet apart, or a little bit further apart. And it would be pretty easy for a code enforcer or a park maintenance person to be able to kind of clearly see that line.
I think the mayor was getting ready to ask the question I was, which was, how big are we envisioning these boulders?
How big are boulders?
So, probably, we have some at the trailhead entrance that are more like aesthetically placed, and they're two to three feet-ish diameter.
Okay.
And so the mowing, or weed whacking, or however you would do it, I mean, I guess one of the things people have complained for years about it being mowed and not allowed to go into a natural state. So why do you want to continue mowing?
Oh, no, the mowing would more be, if we were to have more vegetation naturally, just self-germinate in that area, and we were worried about a fire risk close to a neighboring property, we could mow those down within that property line boundary area. Or you could mow like a swath, say, less than five feet of that property-bound area to decrease fire risk from our property to an adjacent property as a mitigation measure.
But clearly, you wouldn't do that once you got up into the trees, right?
Oh, yes, no, just really close to the boundary line.
Well, but the boundary line touches the trees there.
Yes, I see what you're saying. Yes, towards the water, like...
So between the white dot there?
Like on the backside of the house?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think if I understand, Tanya, what you've said in the past, that yes, your fire mitigation strategy there would be to look at the types of plants that are there that are more highly flammable, and see if you can replace those types of plants with less flammable. Is that a more scientific plant way to say that? But yeah.
So you would do a planting? I was sort of hearing that you would just let it self-seed, but you're now saying that you would do some sort of a planting within some distance of the...
We have done a little bit of a planting in the oak area. We've definitely done invasive species removal control. And we have done a little bit of planting in that zone, mainly oak trees.
Okay. But as far as in the flood zone there, you wouldn't be planting anything?
We could probably have a management plan that focused on specific zones and had some planting at some point. It would be very focused on habitat restoration.
Right.
If we wanted to focus planting on some sort of delineated boundary, that's a different...
No, that's not the... It's the fire break concept that I was exploring there. That boundary line, that would be a north-south line that runs right behind the house, what is the distance from that line to the actual structure?
Of the home?
Yeah.
That is not on my survey document. The setback from the, it would be in this part. I feel like I'm saying I don't know a lot, but I don't know actually how far the line is to the house, I'd just be guessing. Because it's, in terms of the actual distance, I have measurements for it, it's on the survey document, it doesn't show me the boundaries of the house on here.
When you say "behind," do you mean on the west side or the east side?
North.
That side, the west side.
West.
Oh, that distance. I thought you were talking about the one behind the house.
See, that's what, it's hard to talk about in front and behind, because really, the front, I guess, is the arch street.
So if other people have that answer...
I just being out there, it looks like 20 feet or so, they might, yeah.
When they testify, feel free to give us that answer.
Yeah, I apologize, but...
Yeah, we can leave the photo up. Okay.
Do you have any... Oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Did we have an estimate for what it would cost to put in some boulders?
Yes, we did.
The expense of barging and...
Right, we did talk to some contractors, and it is a little bit of expense. It's a one-time capital expense to do something like that. But because of the barging and because of the use of the excavators, we do think that the minimum cost would be about $20,000.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions for us?
I suspect we'll have more after some testimony, maybe.
Yeah, if you want to do that, I can try to track down some of the white dot, black dot distance answers, too.
Cool, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So I have a whole stack of people that would like to speak. When you come up, state your name and city for the record. You'll have three minutes. The lights will change accordingly, you'll get the idea after the first round. Try not to spend a lot of time repeating something that somebody else just said. All right, I'll start with Charles Arnell. Sure, or off the... Yeah. Yeah, that'd probably be okay.
Hello, I'm Charles Arnell. My wife and I are the property owners on the property due south of Spring Park. Earlier in April, I was contacted by city manager. I prepared an in-depth report of everything that we've been chronicling for the last 25 years since I've lived in this property. It's fairly detailed with photos and things. I've just prepared a little statement to read. Starts off, Clackamas County Fire District designated Spring Park.
I was just going to ask if that...
Document has...
Document, you're saying you've given that to the city manager?
I gave two copies to the city manager, yeah.
Previously?
Yeah, in April. So Clackamas County Fire District has designated Spring Park as a wildland urban interface, okay? And that triggers certain things. They recommend that you build a defensible space around your property, removal of heavy fuels on adjacent public lands, removal of potential ignition sources. I've lived here for 25 years. Back in 1999, there was a massive tree fire. In 1999, it was about 30 feet from our property, right about where the 110 is on the diagram there. The only access the fire department had to put that fire out was through our property and my next-door neighbor's property. They came down with their trucks, they had pump cans, they ended up using our hoses to put it out. It was a big fire. So, they brought on additional vehicles a day later to chainsaw the tree down and get it out of there. That was started by a park patron who was camping out under the tree, got out of control real quick, and almost burned the whole place down. So, the state of Oregon, the fire marshal, has what's called fire zones, fire zones 1, 2, and 3. And they go up towards 300 feet out from a house, and that's designated by that diagram there. They recommend a lot of different things, but primarily, you know, removal of dead vegetation, dry grasses around houses, and fire-sensitive areas. And their policy is in effect because Spring Park has been designated a wildland urban interface. They have a fire-wise landscaping checklist from, you know, Clackamas County and the state fire marshal both recommend that you mow the grass, you extend your irrigation into these fire-sensitive area, and you remove all flammable debris in zones 1 through 3. That's all on the state website, and there's diagrams for that. So far, in July 2018, there were two fires within about 100 feet of our house, and both times Clackamas County Fire was called to put them out, okay? You can notice that with Spring Park, the top picture's on the left hand, that's the rig they bring down there, because they have long hoses and access to get long distances. With the amount of parking problems we have on an average weekend, it would be virtually impossible to get that truck beyond that point. I watched them do it, they're practicing it. There are so many cars, and I'm calling the police constantly to get the illegal cars parked, because my neighborhood and I were all extremely vulnerable down there. And I'm only, I have a fire hydrant, you know, within feet of my property, but I had to sprinkle my entire house when I built it for that reason. It's not safe. I'll just go quickly here. Furthermore, we have a massive trespass problem, and there's been almost no effort by the city to curb any such behavior. And this has been going on since 1995. I bought the house in 1994. Now, Google Maps, in this lower section, they've put Spring Park over all four of our properties, okay? And that may not seem like a big deal, but I'm not, I don't own Spring Park, I can't tell them to remove it. The little picture on the left, you can't really see it, but there's a drone flying right over our backyard, okay? I find that to be extremely invasive, and somebody who has a Google map saying that that's the park can easily fly a drone over our backyard and look into our windows, which is exactly what that picture shows and delineates. With the park patrons, there's almost no respect for our private property, not on the land, on the water, nor nowhere. They swim out to my boat dock, they go to get around my gates by just wading in the water, they take my stuff. We have several police reports with physical property stolen, canoes, kayaks, surfboards. My boat's been robbed, my house has been robbed, they broke into my house coming through Spring Park. This is a serious problem, and it doesn't end. There's no way for you guys to see anyone in that park, especially after dark. No one's going down there. The four neighbors who are all here are all, they're the only ones that see what's going on. You know, what I've seen is that the non-residents of Milwaukee really don't care about this area, they come in here, they use it, abuse it, and leave it a mess. So for the past 25 years, I've done what any reasonable person would do to protect their family and their property. I believe the action I've taken has been set forth by the guidelines by the state and the county fire marshals. And quite frankly, it's foreseeable that a fire theft or some serious trespass is going to occur if more's not done, okay? The proposed property delineations would all create an unlawful river infill, which I know when I built my house, there was a zero net fill policy. I don't see how you can put big boulders in a flood plain, which is a federal floodway, and get away with it. It's just not feasible. This whole area floods. There's pictures to the lower left, that's what it looks like during spring runoff. It is completely underwater by several feet. So this will be an infill situation. And I know when most people come down and think I'm encroaching on the park, well, it's actually a river for the most, during the spring runoff at the very least. That's anytime from February through June, it's underwater. You know, my family's safety nor the safety of my neighbors shouldn't be sacrificed in an effort to promote a park area that has not nor cannot be properly accessed or enforced. My homeowners insurance should not be liable for any actions taken by a city or a county who chooses to ignore safety setbacks and malicious trespass on top of a really clear and present fire hazard. The only viable solution that treats both parties fairly, which would be the park patrons, the city, and the property owners, would be to increase private property awareness, increase the fire break, and provide park patrons with greater access to Elk Rock Island. The lower section here, the little cutoff picture, that is what Wes Lynn did on a little island park called Cedar Island Park. They actually built a pedestrian-walking floating bridge over the Willamette from one side of the park to the island, which is where most people want to go. I, as a property owner, know that when people can't get to the island because of high water, that's when all the invasion happens. They look for places on the beach, they come up my yard. We've had people, you know, in our front yard, and they can't get out knocking on the door, saying, "Excuse me, can you let me out your front gate, please? I seem to not be able to get out of the park." It's really bad. So, what I'm proposing is that the city looks at building a floating bridge, which is relatively inexpensive considering what it provides 13 acres more of access year-round, which is where people really want to go. If you want to enjoy the park, you get out to Elk Rock Island, if you're going to have your parties and your fires, you know, at least there's nobody living there. So, with that, I'll answer any questions if that wasn't clear, but that's my statement.
I had two questions. One is the question I asked before about the distance between that property line and the back of your house.
Yeah, so let me explain. When we built the house, that property line, which goes this way north to south, was actually delineated, or legally decided that was side yard, even though it looks like it's backyard because of the weird shape there. So that's about 20 feet.
It's 20 feet between that property line and...
Yeah, you're seeing a huge shadow there, but it's 20 feet, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the side yard, it jogs, it happens twice. So the 110 line and the upper one is considered side yard.
Your technical backyard looks like also about a 20-foot, or... Yeah.
I think the setback is either 15 or 20 to the side, that's a side, but it's not... And then, the setback from the river is actually the area by the water. That's the legal designation when we went through all this when we built the house.
You happen to know where the ordinary high watermark is?
Well, the ordinary high watermark is way up past where even that little, the hedge that's no longer there. It's, I can show you.
There's a microphone, hold on. Mr. Arnell.
Yeah, so you basically, during normal high watermark, this bank has kind of been, over the time, it gets a lot of silt and filled up, but it's pretty much right about here. When water, I have pictures in that report, but pretty much during the spring runoff, this is almost always underwater, and there's a channel through here. During the flood of 96, the entire river, you know, our whole house was surrounded by water, it was way up here. So the river naturally wants to go that way when it's really high. But I believe when we built the house, at least what I recall, there was two federal floodways, and one's here and one's somewhere like right here. So, there's, most of this, there's three areas, the part that carries Elk Rock Island, this part of the lawn, which is in these pictures here, and then over here by the Wylie residents on the other side, they all are underwater during high water. So it's not, it's not all that it seems.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. When you mention an unlawful net infill, can you tell me more about that?
Yeah, you're not allowed to put anything in there. So if you were going to put a boulder in, you have to take that much out, if they allow you to do that. You're not allowed to put any... So, a couple of our neighbors, and there's some famous stories about this, like the Waddles guy from Hollywood Video, he put a bunch of rocks on the bank of the Willamette, and they had to pull them all out. That's basically the principle. And anyone who puts in a retaining wall has to pull them out. You cannot put rocks down there.
Don't you have a walkway, some kind of a stone walkway?
Yeah.
Down there?
Why doesn't that violate the net infill rule?
It probably does. But I could, I did that as a courtesy to not put my dock farther up. So, I mean, you could put a dock, I have the permit to put a dock all the way up to the high watermark, and I didn't. So, it's just to get me out of the mud. But I could replace the last piece of my dock and go farther up, I guess. It just seemed like a better compromise.
A courtesy to the city?
Anyone walking the beach who wants to get through the beach, who doesn't want to swim to get around it without trespassing.
And are you saying that you don't think there should be any kind of delineation? Let's suppose, let me ask it this way. Let's suppose that there were no federal laws that we were worried about, and I know that's theoretical if there are, but don't you also find the problem without the delineation?
I think the fundamental problem is this, is that there was a mistake made. That property used to belong to this house, okay? And they traded it a long time ago, like 55 years ago. They traded the road easement that basically is the 107, 114, 110. They traded it for non-buildable land, which is the 111, 121 piece. So the reason why this property line is so messed up to begin with is that it was never really meant to be that way. But what they did is they traded it for a section just kind of where the north portion of my house is, for buildable land that's above the flood plain. So they figured that the park was never going to be developed, or that this would never be an issue with development. And so what we have now is, everyone's saying, "Well, you're encroaching on park land." Yeah, I guess, in a roundabout way, you could say that, but that's not my intention. I don't need any more land, that's not the point. The point is, is keeping fire hazard, keeping trespass, and keeping things, you know. When you have a person walk through the park, look at a house like that, and walk all the way down your side yard and knock on your front door and ask to be let out, it's a little bit disturbing, you know? You don't know who this person is, you could be, you know, completely unprepared for visitors, and this happens repeatedly. This is, you know, if any of you had somebody walking into your back gate and going up into your back slider door and having someone knock, you'd be a little bit shocked. I mean, this happens on a kind of a weekly basis at times. It's bad. So do I delineate? That's not, I don't think the answer is doing that. I think what it is, is I've offered to, you know, do a beautification easement, some kind of lease purchase, do anything to fix the problem forever, and then you could use that money to build a bridge, which is really what the public wants. I mean, you could say they want that, but there's nothing there. They're just staring in my backyard. I mean, I've got trespassers, the top pitchers are, you know, that's just average trespassers. People coming in with their dogs, people coming in, homeless people, people have, you know, up to no good. I mean, these are people that are directly coming into my yard looking for opportunity to steal, to trespass, to case the place. We've had home invasion robberies, it's been frightening. And I've been here 25 years. And I've been here 25 years, it's getting worse. So delineate? Yeah, no, that's a, that's a, it's not really going to stop the problem. My theory would be to make a case to move the park to the natural northern border, which is where it should be, and then use the money to improve the park for what people, you know, whether you put more parking in, make better access, or put a bridge. That's what the real solution is. Everything else is just, you know, certain groups of people picking on other groups of people, you know. But us, and I think you'll hear from my neighbors here shortly, you know, it's not getting better. Everything you do to improve the park is making it worse for us.
Well, okay.
It is.
I hope you see some, okay.
I don't, you know, honestly, I've lived here 25 years.
You're saying that as the city works hard to improve its parks, it's causing a problem?
Not its parks, this park, okay? So if you look at that parking problem, that's what you created. There never used to be people coming down there. It was supposed to be a pocket park that you could walk into from the neighborhood. Okay? Most of the people there are not even from Milwaukee. Okay? There's a ton of people there, they just come in, they leave their trash, they're way beyond the curfew, they're lighting the fires. So yes, I believe that what you're trying to do is the right thing, but what's happening is the wrong thing.
What street is that in that park?
That is, what, Sparrow?
Sparrow?
Sparrow and 20th. So that's how everyone in our neighborhood has to come in and out of our neighborhood. It's almost blocked completely. And that doesn't even show you the picture going down 20th where the cars are parked every which way. You know, sometimes they're parallel, sometimes they're at an angle, sometimes they're blocking the whole thing. I mean, it's bad. So, you know, you're improving the access to the park and creating a problem for the people who live here. That's what I mean by it. I'm not against improving parks. I think it's nice, you know, that I don't have to negotiate with the city of Milwaukee to get police to come down anymore. I used to have to convince them I lived in the city of Milwaukee. Because two of my neighbors don't, they're in Clackamas.
Right. Well, I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Dave Tyler.
Five minutes to Milo.
Okay. Yvonne, I see the same thing on the bottom of yours, same thing. Gary?
Gary's not, Gary's not here.
Gary's not here?
Gary isn't here.
Carolyn?
Carolyn? I haven't seen Carolyn.
I haven't seen Carolyn either.
Did you see her?
I haven't seen her. Okay, Judith?
Oh, Arnell.
Oh. Sorry. I look like a K on the last.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on up.
I'm Judith Arnell, the wife of Charles that just spoke. And like Charles said, we've lived on this property 25 years. And I sometimes fear, if he's not home at night, I'm afraid. We've had peeping toms, we had a homeless person bathing in our hot tub. We've had, we don't open our windows anymore on our patios because we're terrified that people are going to break into our house again. And it's disheartening. Some days I can't even get my car to our house because of the parking situation. But most of all, I lived through the flood of 96 when our house was 100% underwater. We had to take a boat to get out of our property. And these are concerns that Charles brought up, that we, this park business and trying to put boulders in all this, I don't see how that's going to help. We fear the fire, one of our neighbors is a firefighter, and I would hope that he would be able to speak a little bit more on that, but I think Charles explained pretty much what I would have said, other than the fact that, yeah, it is a really problem. And I think when they come knocking on our door to come out our front gate, because we did put a gate for our safety, they're casing the place out. They want to see if anybody answers the door and come in. So it's, you know, we're the highest taxpayers in Milwaukee, we'd think that we'd be protected a little bit more. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Gene Marland?
Sean Marland.
Sorry?
That's all right. I've been called worse. So I am Charles and Judith Arnell's neighbor.
Can you insert the microphone?
Grab the mic.
Yes, you can't hear me.
We can hear you, it doesn't end up on the recording.
That's all right. My name is Sean Marland. Do you need my address as well?
Just that you're a resident of Milwaukee.
So my home is here, and we just spent $15,000 putting a gate in because we've had the same problem. I've lived here for 16 years, and this was our, this is our dream home that we, it happened and now my wife is the same way. She is afraid to be home alone. We are actually putting somebody into, we're building an apartment and putting somebody there so that when I, because I travel a lot, to have somebody there for her. We have people coming up and walking around our house. We have people, we've had things stolen. We've given up on the police. We don't even turn stuff in anymore because frankly, it's just, it's not worth it. The other thing is, is the fire situation. We've had fires along the road here, we've had fires up here, we've had fires along here. They come down here and they'll put a fire right here because they can't get on the island. And they'll have their bonfires there and they'll sit there and they'll just have their bonfires. Charles has brought up, I think, what was a great idea, the bridge, and I know for most of us owners are willing to help him economically to somehow, whether it's through a land lease, a permanent land lease or a property purchase, to where we can delineate the property where the natural vegetation already is. It's up higher, it survives because it doesn't get flooded out every year, and build that bridge and go out to the park. Frankly, my kids and I love the park. I walk that park almost every day. So the people that did the work there did a great job and have done a great job, and I personally appreciate it. But he is right, the parking is a huge problem. There's a lot of times when I bring my utility trailer home, I can't get down to my own home because there's so many cars parked along 20th. Sparrow I can squeeze through, but when you make that turn on the 20th and then come around, it's almost impossible to get down through there. And so all of these things have just piled up, just one thing after another, for 16 years. And in the last probably five to seven years, it's exponentially gotten worse. It's just, it's ridiculous. I have to spend the kind of money that I have to spend that frankly, I would rather use to pay my kids' education than to have to do these things. It's wrong and there are other ways to make it better and still allow the public to enjoy a beautiful park that the city of Milwaukee has created. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Marie Hoskins?
I'm Marie Hoskins, and I live in the house next door to the Arnells, in the, oops, in the gray house roof here. And the thing that I thought's kind of interesting is that there's a natural break here because the hill goes up. So it's like, that's already, you know, kind of the perch of the park. And a lot of this is all that, what do you call it, volcanic? Like there's not really rich soil here and it all dries out. And I think what they were saying here too is, in the winter, it's wet from about here on. So there's a lot of that. But then I think just the same thing of people going up, we've got a driveway, they walk up it, and then just the fire concerns too. And it's just keeping the fire danger out from here on the lawns. So it's just, so I don't think anything else.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Eric Schilling?
That was my wife, Marie. Yeah, I live in this house right here. One of the concerns I would have putting boulders or anything like that in here is all the debris that comes from the river every year at runoff. We spend our money to clean all this up. I mean, we spend several days with a track hoe or something like that getting rid of all this debris. And we have two-ton logs that come down every year. And if you put rocks in here, that's all going to get caught. A lot of times it can kind of float on by and go, you know, go back out, but if we put all these logs, it's just going to catch everything. So, and we have a really good perch here. We see, there's fires out here every single weekend and smoke. We hear people screaming all night long out there. It's really bad, so that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. William Schultz. Thank you.
So I live at the last house, and I don't know if you can see it on this map, but at 12525 Southeast 18th. On the issue of the boulders, the railroad actually built up their railroad tracks with giant boulders. People climb over those boulders to get down to our house. Now there is blackberry bushes that are growing up there, they're ugly, but they are very effective at keeping people from climbing through them. So I appreciate the idea of boulders. I just, people walk around them over them as they do from the railroad track down. The only other issue I'd have with that is if you have to get into this area to fight a fire, you're going to have to have access from at least the Arnells' yard or somebody else's to get into there. And if you don't leave space in one spot for somebody's rig to get through there, you're not going to be able to get there at all. There is one fire hydrant down in this area for this entire park area, and then you've got to go all the way up around the hill to get to the next fire hydrant. So water is a very big issue. Just this last month, I personally put out a fire on lark that a homeless guy lit. And when I asked him what he was doing, he didn't like the weeds. Had I not got there when this had started, which my other neighbor had seen as well as he was coming down the hill, it was taking off so fast that it would have taken out that whole park in a matter of minutes. The wind, almost on a daily basis, is coming, just howling through here. When you see the cottonwood, it just looks like it's snow is flowing through. So something was to start in here, as it already has. It's just a matter of time before it hits the Arnells and the rest of us. And with the limited amount of water and the amount of fire load in this area, it's intense.
So I understand the fuel load, where the trees are. Do you foresee the area that's technically in the park that's currently being mowed, the weeds, the natural plants that would grow there? Do you see those as being a high fuel load? Or is it more the trees you have concerns about?
The whole thing actually is a huge fuel load. If you go along this street and up along as you're going back out, I think that's 20th, it's just tons of dead debris in there. And I don't know who cut a tree down, but it was somebody with the city cut a tree down that was already kind of falling apart and just left it in that park. There's kind of a natural little dip down in there along 20th, I believe it's 20th. And I mean, it's just full of dead debris. And in the park, which is, you know, beautiful at parts, it's just, there's tons of dead fuel in there. It's just a disaster waiting to happen.
Okay.
And as Charles was talking about, these zones, defensible spaces, when we go on wildland fires, which we have crews out on right now, one of the things we do is structural protection. So when we get there, we start removing all that stuff and we have a sheet. Either your house is savable or we can help save it. And if we can, then we start removing all that fuel. But if people haven't done a good job of doing it themselves, then there's nothing we can do. I mean, we can't spend a week on one house trying to get all that debris out of there. So we get in as quick as we can, we get as much of that stuff away. If they've got wood piles, we move it, we cut brush back. Anything we can get away from that house, then we go to the next house. And the same thing, we have a checklist. If it meets that requirement for us to be able to get in there quickly and do it, then we'll do it. If not, we wouldn't do it. And this area here is just, it's a disaster with the amount of fuel load right there, especially next to that house. I would not live in that house.
Sorry.
Sorry. Beautiful house, but.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Thanks. Thank you.
One other thing is, I put on another fire at my driveway, which is way away from the park, that somebody threw a cigarette in and actually ended up calling Clackamas County because I didn't have enough water to put that out. And it looked small, but it was all the way in under the bark and coming up about 30 feet away because it will travel underneath and pop back up. So Clackamas County came down there and put it out, and that was nowhere near the park. We get people down there stealing stuff all the time. I've had people up at our pool hanging out and it shows that it's part of the park. It's obvious it's not part of the park, but they come up anyway. So.
None of us smoke.
Yeah. And I love the park. I grew up down there fishing, you know, hanging out when I was a kid, you know. I love the park, but we've got to do something to kind of figure out how this is going to work for everybody.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Which department are you with?
What's that?
Which department are you with?
I'm out in Forest Grove.
Thanks. Thanks for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, Catherine Heisey.
Hello, council. I live at 12210 Southeast 19th Avenue, which if this photograph went a little farther, you'd be able to see is the fourth door to the north of kind of what we're looking at in the entrance to Spring Park. And I hear a lot of very valid concerns that I share with the neighbors who live adjacent to the park down in this area. I think that there's perhaps some conflation going on here. We do have safety issues, we do have safety access issues in terms of the fire department and the police department being able to get down there and respond. These are not issues that are directly related to the encroachment. The encroachment is, I understand, a sensitive topic that the city has kind of batted around back and forth for a long time now. And it's something that has kind of settled into being camps that are for and against. And I wanted to be here to represent the fact that it's not just a concern that a few people have. This is a concern that is shared by other people in the neighborhood who maybe aren't the faces you normally see who show up here. And I understand that the encroachment is an awkward issue and it may be difficult to delineate the boundary. However, I also have concerns about giving up parkland. This is a working-class community. We need to have spaces where people who don't have a lot of money to spend can go to recreate. And this is one of those places. And yes, we do have parking issues because the park has become more popular as we've made it easier for people to use. However, I don't think that taking parkland away from people is the direction that the city or the council has outlined in the comprehensive plan or in the vision that you all have been outlining in many other ways in the work that you're doing. So when I read the report from staff recommending potentially negotiating about the encroachment, I became concerned. And I appreciate the time that the Arnells and other neighbors in that area have put into considering how we might address this and how the resources that could be gained could be used to improve the park even more. I'm deeply concerned to hear interest in pushing people out to Elk Rock Island. We have a very hard time getting safety response out to that area. If the intent is to push people out, then we really need to talk about safety issues there. But I think that really what would be the best thing to do would be to consider how we can continue to have what is nearly an acre in area be part of Spring Park and also address these very real safety issues, but they're two separate issues, let's not conflate them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Pam Denham?
Can I go along with Milo, please?
Sure. All right, so I have three others besides Milo, so. Put it aside for 15 minutes, I guess.
From Milo?
From Milo and Pam. Milo and Pam, come on out. So I have a total of five.
Two of them are not here. Don't, two of them are not here.
We have a very hard time getting safety response out to that area. If the intent is to push people out, then we really need to talk about safety issues there. But I think that really what would be the best thing to do would be to consider how we can continue to have what is nearly an acre in area be part of Spring Park and also address these very real safety issues. But they're two separate issues. Let's not conflate them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Pam Denham.
Can I go along with Milo, please?
Sure. All right, so I have three others besides Milo, so... Put it said for 15 minutes, I guess.
From Milo?
From Milo and Pam. Milo and Pam, come on out. So, I have a total of five.
Two of them are not here. Don't...
Of course, they were, because everybody that I kept are here.
Oh, okay.
Throughout Carolina.
Okay.
Pam Denham, 12106 Southeast 19th Avenue, Milwaukee.
Oh, it's just the letter that you...
We have that.
Is it the letter you sent? Okay, we have a printed copy at our desk.
Milo Denham, ISNDA Chair. I live at 12106 Southeast 19th Avenue. Before I start, I'd like to comment that Island Station neighbors are in agreement with the neighbors who have talked about parking around the park. It's a big issue. A number of my neighbors have come to me as the chair and expressed concerns about fire and safety. It's been in the master plan to address that from about 20 years ago and again in 10 years ago, and it's something that we really need to look at. We're in agreement with that. Fire concerns are also shared. There's recently a fire on Elk Rock Island and was reported. We talk about this at the NDA meetings about when you see a fire, you call 911. You don't wait and ask, is it supposed to be there or not? You merely call. Homeless issue is also a problem within the neighborhood. It's similar to what I heard tonight, is similar to what I've heard occurring over at the Triment Remnant Lot last summer. And I haven't heard this year if there's been continued problems, but that's been a problem over on the other side of Island Station, on the east side of the neighborhood. And the fuel load next to the railroad tracks, that's a problem because that's railroad property, not park property. So, we'd have to get the railroad involved to go after that. And so, that's another entity that will have to get involved. Mr. Mayor, Council President, and esteemed councilors, the Island Station neighbors want to thank you and the city for conducting the land survey of the southern boundary of Spring Park Nature Area completed in mid-November 2017. This was the first step required to remedy the many encroachments into the park that have been restricting the use of the park by the citizens of Milwaukee of almost an acre for over 30 years, 12% of the park. The council staff report noted three key points in numbered paragraphs. Significant portion of the mowed area between the river and the neighbor's house is encroaching on city property. About 1/4 of the mowed area between the house and 20th Avenue is encroaching on the public right-of-way and is owned by Clackamas County. Dock location is not landed according to where the planning commission dock permit allows it to be landed. We are concerned that the three numbered paragraphs make it look like there are only three encroachments committed by the neighbor when there are some 18 encroachments and most likely more. We have issues with the encroachment being dock partially landed illegally on city property in the park, which is not in compliance with a dock permit. Field stone walk illegally constructed mostly on city property in the park. Illegally parking boat trailers on city property in the park. Irrigation system illegally constructed on city property in the park. Illegally planting non-native grass in the park. Mowing the illegally planted non-native grass in the park. 7 to 9 invasive pampas grass plants illegally planted on city property in the park. Hedge of 42 to 45 non-native arbor vida plants illegally planted on city property in the park. A hedge of 11 to 13 non-native evergreen trees illegally planted on city property in the park. No trespassing signs illegally placed on city property in the park. Black cyclone fence illegally constructed on city property in the park. 30 to 35 non-native arbor vida evergreen shrubs illegally planted on the property line and in the park property. Barbed wire fence illegally constructed in the Lark Street right-of-way. 30 to 40 non-native arbor vida evergreen shrubs illegally planted in the Lark Street right-of-way. Illegally planted non-native grass lawn in the Lark Street right-of-way. Mowing the illegally planted non-native grass in the park. Illegally planted trees in the Lark Street right-of-way. No trespassing sign illegally placed on Lark Street right-of-way property in the park. In addition to failing to list all the encroachments, the council staff report does not mention the fact that the neighbor's been using almost an acre, 12%, of the Spring Park Nature Area as their personal property for over 30 years with the full knowledge and consent of the city. This is an area equivalent to the entire site of Wichita Park. These are not the actions of a good neighbor. Land survey markers. To ensure the city and the public could find the property boundary, the land surveyor placed 12-inch tall white stakes near each boundary corner. Unfortunately, the neighbor who's encroaching in the park has illegally destroyed at least four of the 12-inch stakes by placing, or that were placed by the land surveyor to mark where each corner is located. By slowly pounding the white stakes into the ground over several months, no one noticed them slowly getting shorter until they were pounded underground and hidden from view. This is not the act of a good neighbor. Hiding the property line. While the council staff report notes that the owner of the property adjacent to the park and his neighbor to the south expressed concerns about bringing the public closer to private property due to the crime, the neighbors gone out of their way to hide the property boundary so the law-abiding citizens can't see where the park ends and their private property starts. They have left barbed wire fence in the Lark Street right-of-way and placed no trespassing signs in the park and continue to mow the nature area, all in attempt to hide where the boundary line is located. If the neighbor was truly concerned about preventing people from trespassing, why not do like every other property owner in Milwaukee? Why not build a fence or plant an arbor vida hedge on their property instead of building fences and planting arbor vida on the city's property? Repeated attempts to erase the true park boundary is not an act of a good neighbor. A key point made in the 2010 Harigo Letter, which was ignored in the July 31 staff report, is that the city, as a property owner, has the right to require the removal of any encroachments into Spring Park. It is time that the city exercise this right and remove the many encroachments into Spring Park Nature Area. The city needs to show the other 99% of the citizens that the rules in the municipal code are meant for everyone. We find it disturbing that the council staff report included the 2010 Harigo Letter in this council staff report. We are concerned that the inclusion of the Harigo Letter lends credibility to the points made in the letter, points that are no longer valid now that the city has conducted a property boundary survey. A careful review of the Harigo Letter shows that the findings were made without the benefit of knowing where the property boundary was located, and as such, were not formal statements of fact, as was noted in the letter. And now, we have a land survey and know where the property boundary is located. The findings in the Harigo Letter are moot. But since the city's attached the letter to this council staff report, let's take a look at several of the key points. No trespassing signs. The Harigo Letter stated that since it has historically been difficult for Spring Park users to identify the property line between the park and the property to the south, the city has chosen to leave the signs where they are. A year later, the 2011 Code Enforcement Letter told, asked them to remove the no trespassing signs from the park no later than August 2, 2011. Seven years later, there are still no trespassing signs in the park in the form of a sign with a picture of a pistol and the words, "Warning: Nothing in this house is worth dying for." And now that we have a survey of the property boundary, park users should know where they are approaching private property and respect the neighbor's private property. Unfortunately, the neighbor has not behaved in ways that respect or uphold the true boundary of the park. The neighbor has illegally destroyed the markers showing where the property line is, thus hiding where their property is located and unnecessarily putting park visitors at risk of trespass. This is not the act of a good neighbor. Dock location. While it's true, the July 31, 2018 council staff report notes, city staff has stated in the past, in the Harigo Letter, that the dock is on the neighbor's property. Left standing alone in this council staff report, this statement is misleading. It was also noted in the letter that, "We did not formally survey the boundary, so our conclusions are not formal statements of fact." We now have a formal survey of the boundary, and now it's clear that the dock is partially landed on city property in the park. The boat dock permit clearly shows that the dock was to be landed in the center of the western property boundary line, but the Arnell's placed their boat dock at the northern end of their western property boundary line. There's no excuse for not landing the dock where it's supposed to be. Ask any property owner, and they will be able to tell you exactly where their property corners are. Now that the city knows the dock has not landed as prescribed in the boat dock permit, has the city notified the other parties to the boat dock permit of this failure to follow the permit specification? National Marine Fisheries Services, US Army Corps of Engineers, and the Oregon State Marine Board? Placing your dock on your neighbor's property is not the sign of a good neighbor. Section 804-135 Compliance with Zoning Regulation states that no owner of real property may permit such property or any improvement thereon to be used in a manner inconsistent with all state, county, or city land use and zoning regulations and decisions pertaining to the property. Section 19502.1 Accessory Structures General Provision Part A states that no accessory structure shall encroach upon or interfere with the use of any adjoining property or public right-of-way, including but not limited to streets, alleys, and public and private easements. Part B of that same section states that an accessory structure must maintain a minimum side rear yard setback of 5 feet except where other requirements of the title are more restrictive. Pursuant to these municipal codes, we'd like to see the dock moved and landed as the original permit required, about 25 feet to the south from where it has currently landed. Not following requirements in a planning commission permit is not the act of a good neighbor. Fence in the Lark Street right-of-way. The Harigo Letter states, "Mr. Arnell has acknowledged that near the eastern edge of the fence, the fence runs along the undeveloped Lark Street right-of-way. The city has not determined whether this fence is in fact in the right-of-way at any particular location." Well, we now have a formal survey of the boundary line, and now it is clear that the barbed wire fence is entirely on the right-of-way property. The 2011 Code Enforcement Letter told the Arnell's to remove the barbed wire fence from the park no later than August 2, 2011. Seven years later, the barbed wire fence is still in place. This is not the response of a good neighbor. Mowing a portion of the Spring Park Nature Area. The Harigo Letter notes that Mr. Arnell mows his own property and a portion of the city's natural area property to the north of his property line. It goes on to note that, "The city retains the right to request that Mr. Arnell or any subsequent owner of this property cease any maintenance activities on the city's property without providing any reasons for the change in policy." Well, it's past time that the city require the Arnell's to cease to mow the portion of the Spring Park Nature Area, since this is not an appropriate activity within a nature area. Mowing a nature area is not an act of a good neighbor. Remedy. In light of the 2011 Code Enforcement Letter that requested a number of compliance actions, which were not followed, we ask that the city not request to the Arnell's to correct any of the above encroachments, as we doubt that this would ever be completed or comply with the request, making this remedy a waste of time. Therefore, we request that the city utilize city employees, NCPRD employees, and neighborhood volunteers to remove the encroachments. While we recognize that the city won't get far in seeking to collect rent for 30 years of private use of the parkland, we suggest that the city seek damages to obtain the cost of restoration of the native area. Alternative: do nothing. The July 31 city staff report notes that one of the options is to take no action at this time. This is not true. Doing nothing is not an option for the city. This is because the city has recently been working to construct sidewalks to create safe passage for schoolchildren, but has run into issues of encroachment in the right-of-way where they want to construct those sidewalks. If the city lets these egregious encroachments into Spring Park Nature Area continue, how can the city expect to go after those citizens who have encroached on city property or right-of-way, which now impedes on the city's goal to build safe passages for the students? Accommodate a good neighbor, not a bad neighbor. We note with alarm, the council staff report notes that the staff recommendation, "We would work with the property owner to align the property boundaries to protect access to high-value park resources, finalize that boundary, then delineate the property line per NCPRD's recommendations." Why would the city need to align the property boundary or finalize that boundary if they are not considering accommodating these encroachments by selling or leasing a portion of the park property? Reducing the size of Spring Park Nature Area will not be tolerated by the Island Station or the citizens of Milwaukee. Giving away public land that belongs to all the citizens of Milwaukee will not be tolerated. Riverfront property that gives citizens of Milwaukee and the general public access to the Willamette River is too valuable to sell, trade, or otherwise dispose of, especially to a neighbor who's demonstrated time and again that they have no respect for the city or the citizens of Milwaukee and have demonstrated over and over again that they are not a good neighbor. I recently heard Representative Karen Power talk about how difficult it can be to follow one's moral compass instead of following the path of political expediency. Do the citizens of Milwaukee prevail today, or does the political expediency? This is a defining moment for the city of Milwaukee. The council's actions in this matter will tell us if the city council and its staff truly stand for all of its citizens. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, a couple. Oh, Pam still has a statement.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam.
Mine takes about 60 seconds, plus five, because I just realized that the arbor vida that is in the next neighbor's yard, that green line below the 111 line?
Yeah.
That's arbor vida that's recently been cut down. That doesn't seem to be bound up with logs from the winter drift, but just saying. Well, there you go. That's the answer. So, this illegal encroachment has been known to the city and the encroaching neighbor for decades. This illegal encroachment into Spring Park Natural Area shows a willful disregard for the rights of the citizens of Milwaukee and the city's boundaries. This also shows a willful disregard by the city for the 99% of its citizens to have access to their park. As Milo said, this is a defining moment to show what our city really stands for. We cannot, excuse me, we cannot allow the city to decide what constitutes the greatest value to park visitors while accommodating Mr. Arnell's encroachment. If Mr. Arnell is truly concerned about possible crime and trespass onto his property instead of his crime of trespass onto public property, he should put up a fence or boulders on his land like the rest of us do. I respectfully implore you to do the right thing, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, city staff, and enforce the park boundaries and end the encroachment. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a question about the stakes, because you mentioned a couple of times that the property owner had illegally moved those stakes or pounded them in. How do you know that?
Circumstantial evidence.
It could have been a homeless person, I'm sure, with a hammer to pound them in, but someone did it.
Okay. Okay.
Good morning.
Not right now.
So, what you didn't say in any of your testimony was what you think of the boulder idea.
I don't like it, personally. This is just me speaking, I haven't talked to any of the neighbors. It's expensive. The neighbors have correctly pointed out...
Take that microphone right there.
Take the microphone.
We're all being good at that.
The neighbors have correctly pointed out that the high water, here's the bluff, comes up to about here, because the water does go around. But from here up, you could put in the native plant hedge over to here, over to here, and up. There's the arbor vida already planted here, which extends way out over to here, and the evergreens extend way out over into here, the evergreen trees. And then, back here, you could put a native plant hedge here and here, and that could delineate where the boundary is. And then, when a visitor came down, they would see where the boundary is. By moment, you can't tell when you're on the park or on private property. And if we take the time to delineate this boundary, then we are protecting their property rights, and we should be doing that as a city. We should not be allowing this openness to continue. It's not fair to the neighbors.
Can I respond to the boulders?
Sure. I don't think that question was necessarily just directed at Milo.
Well, thank you. Some form of delineation, I think, is a good idea to keep people off of this property. Everybody's right, you cannot tell. And by mowing it flat again, you cannot tell which is which. So, maybe boulders, maybe some iron posts that don't catch too much of the drift in the winter. Some form of delineation to see. And it could be every 10 feet. On the, I'm talking about in the flood zone. Thank you.
Okay. No questions?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So, I want to point out a couple of things before we start, just so that everybody's on the same page, and I'm gonna grab the microphone so it can make it clear. Tim, correct me if I go off base, but this is based on years of being a kayaker and accessing rivers. The ordinary high-water mark ends private property rights, correct? In the state of Oregon, on navigable rivers.
In most cases. Not always the case, depending on how the deed was written in the history, but in most cases...
Roughly, if that is the ordinary high-water mark, and we'll pretend it's somewhere in there, but let's say for the moment that that's the ordinary high-water mark, none of this, whether it's on this side or that side of that line, is either city property or the Arnell's property. That is state of Oregon property. So, that's one thing to keep in mind. To the question, to the question of a bridge to Elk Rock Island, I just want to clear that up. I believe that our legal agreement with the city of Portland, who was the previous owner of Elk Rock Island, specifically disallows that. I spent a lot of time reading that damn agreement.
I know that it has to be used as a nature area. I would have to get you back any sort of writing about any sort of connection between the two, but I can pull it up right now.
Okay. But that's my memory of that agreement.
Well, and whether it disallows it or not, there's a...
Well, I just, that makes it a moot point, right? Something I want to point out is that the one thing that everybody here that is here for this cares about and agrees with is there's a parking problem. Yes? I'm not seeing any negative response. I'm not seeing any negative responses to that. And I can tell you from the city's standpoint, and probably from NCPRD, although they can answer the question on their own, that we don't have a budget item that would allow us to build a bunch of parking out there.
That is correct.
So, those are, I just wanted to establish all those facts as facts to start the conversation. So, thoughts?
Well, were we going to have NCPRD come back up?
Do you guys want to come back up and address anything that was said? I'm actually, do you have a question for you?
I have a couple, yeah.
Yeah.
Come up, I think I can do one.
So, the question of fill, boulders being filled.
I believe that the city nor NCPRD would ever move forward with any project without having proper permits from either the city or from the Corps of Engineers. So, nothing would ever happen without approved permits.
I concur. We'd follow the rules.
Well, I hope so, but are you aware of the infill issue?
Yeah, I mean, we had to deal with that, clear out it.
Remove the fill, yes. For our attorney for a moment.
There is a permitting process required of Division of State Lands and the Corps of Engineers when you're putting what's considered fill in a floodway. It's not prohibited, it's required to be permitted. The fundamental rule is that you preserve the capacity of the floodway, which means if you add something, you need to take an equal volume out.
Right. So what that would look like in practice is we'd put in a boulder that's this big, and then on the other side of the boulder, dig a hole that's that big, and there we go, that's your, and then six months later, it'd be filled in with silt, and it would all be moot. But that's literally what the law requires.
I don't mean to flip in my response, that's not my interest, but we did note, related to the budget, one of the things we don't know are all the necessary permits that would be required to proceed with the boulder option. So that would be a next step for us, is to continue looking through. We pursued that material largely because many of the other things we were considering weren't, just weren't workable. The fence wasn't workable, and we were worried about the flooding, and this was a material we thought could work. So we would, we need to take the next steps and look at what permits could be required.
And there's thresholds like 50 cubic yards, so there's certain thresholds that are already set within that permit system. So, we would be following all of that.
Sorry, can't, at this point, take any comments from the audience.
What about the idea of a native hedge? I thought you had concerns about that not being a viable option.
We implemented a native plant hedge about here. The trail system is about in here, and so we implemented a native plant hedge about in here, and it's been planted with very prickly native plants. And the purpose was to try to encourage visitors to stay on the trail. So we did that within here. Once you get out into this zone, there are certain plants that are more fire resistant. So, we would, if we were to plant plants in here, or encourage and want to have plants in here, we would want them to be fire resistant. So, plants like these arborvitae getting close to the house, those are plants that we would not be planting because those have higher...
I was going to ask that. My experience of arborvitae is that it's highly flammable.
Yes.
So that planting is added to the fuel load. Thanks.
But there are other kinds of plants that...
Yes, there are.
That would be less prone to...
Have lower fire risk, yes. So, I mean, you know, also just thinking about long-term maintenance, that's, so I am the manager, I'm not, I'm making recommendations based on how to help the city implement this, right? So, a lot of our native plants expand and like to grow and expand their, so we would have to do a lot of trimming, and normally in natural areas, we try to do low-maintenance-type options, alternatives, to decrease the cost of our government entity, basically. So, it would be more expensive, long-term, to implement a hedge the whole way. And, you know, when you're talking about grasses, if you're talking about primarily grasses and shallow soils in this area, you know, they, if a fire, if and when a fire does catch, you're going to have lower flame height in that area. If you're planting things that are taller, just like we've heard, you're going to have higher fire risk.
And a hedge, I mean, there is a concern that a hedge would catch debris. I mean, if you, the further down you went to the river, that it would catch debris, right? I mean, in the high water, I mean, we pick up pieces of docks off of that float up between the island and Spring Park, we pick up all kinds of things every spring that we...
Or it catches or drops as the water goes down.
So, with the, this is a very valid concern, I'm not diminishing it, but if costs weren't a factor, are you saying we could do a hedge with some native plant other than the, as an option other than the boulders? Or do you think it's just not really a good option?
The whole way, all the way out to, so, I mean, the other thing is, is you do need different types of plants depending upon where your, what your conditions are, and so some of those rocky outcropping areas, probably the vegetation shrubs wouldn't grow as well on those, so there'd be little bald spots. And then, other areas where you have a lot more water, you might have less growth because there's too much water, too much of the time, so you'll have spots where it might not grow as well. So there are some unknowns about how well everything would grow and how well it would fill in, and then some areas will...
Take off.
Probably go bonkers, yeah.
Well, and so that gets me to, and tell me if I'm wrong about this, but I guess my feeling is, the boulder idea retains a delineation a long time, whereas the planting idea, at some point, it's bonkers here and it's bald there, and the delineation isn't as clear. And when we're talking about wanting the public to know, the police to know, et cetera, it seems like the boulder idea is a longer-term durable solution for, you know, people know those boulders didn't actually fall directly, you know, those were placed, you know, it's obvious. Whereas the hedge becomes this amorphous thing that isn't obviously a line anymore.
Just looks like part of the nature park.
Right.
Yeah, right. I get you.
Yeah, this is a tough, a tough area because of the floodway, so, yeah.
Are there any other questions that we can help answer? With respect to the photo, I'm going to need to follow up with our GIS person tomorrow to see if I can actually get that information, a little bit more on that. I'm happy to follow that up.
About the black and white corners?
Yeah, so I apologize for that.
The black and white, I was going to say, I thought you were talking about the date, which I don't...
But I can follow up on that item.
Do you think we might get an answer on the date as well?
Yeah, that would be my intent, is what, when did we overlap these two things? What's the photo from? And then what I can do, if that's unsatisfactory, is actually just replicate it, take the survey results and make me a new one. So, but at first, I'll try to track down the origin.
Well, the other, the other very useful piece of information would be some kind of official concept around the, either the ordinary high-water mark, the meander mark, or the third, whatever the third thing is that can delineate, because that's going to matter, no matter what we do, right?
Right, some kind of representation in a visual form where you can see where those lines are.
I will just disclose again, you know, open, that that has been difficult for us to secure.
I would pursue the survey. They should be able to do that relatively easily.
They have not to date.
I mean, I do, so there's pictures of this Google map thing that Mr. Arnell presented that shows the park continuing down. Of course, that's, you know, not all park, but I do think maybe that ordinary high-water mark is what that's...
That's what that represents.
What it's representing, yeah.
Our homes are in that, in that green area. Our homes are actually in that area.
I'm going to bring that up for council to be able to actually see, it's a tiny little thing.
Sure, what you're referring to.
We bring it up on the computer.
So, are they only saying, so which's the red line? Are they only saying that the green part is the park?
Theoretically, boundaries, this is, I mean, the park, obviously, right down to the park boundary.
So, pool in the park.
Presumably, that's, well...
So, as council is talking...
Does it only mean that the pool wasn't built, but all the ordinary high-water?
So I'm going to just say this on the record real fast, we're not capturing conversation that's happening between the two, so if we are interested in bringing people to the DIES we can, or I can take the...
Well, I questioned, there's the green mass, and then there's the red delineating marks, and the houses are, look like they're right outside of the green mass, which it says is the park, but then we don't know what those red lines are supposed to represent, and it's hard to tell what, it's hard to tell from this what it all is supposed to represent.
I guess I would like to...
We know the park doesn't go that far.
Right, I would like to recognize and acknowledge that there's some errors in Google Maps. I mean, those are, they have pointed out some errors in Google Maps, which is also contributing to confusion around where the park is, because when you go online to look at that, so there's some steps, and I'm not quite sure what those are, again, it goes back to my GIS friend who's not here, what steps can we take to help rectify any errors that are on Google Maps that they've shown you that...
Call the Googles tomorrow? Yeah, I don't know.
There is actually a process for us to do that, it just, it's not always successful, it doesn't mean we can't.
Well, and it probably is not quick and dirty either, I mean, it's probably, you know, takes some time to make things like that happen.
But that's something we're happy to work towards.
Yeah.
Sarah, so, my impression is that we've still got enough outstanding questions that we need answered before we make any kind of determination. So, I guess what I'm asking is, are there any other pieces of information that you will want in order to be able to make some kind of decision on this?
Well, and let's think, too, is there somehow, I mean, anybody, do we need, for instance, to talk to Fire One for anything? Do we need to talk to our police department for anything? I mean, you know...
We have reached out...
Let's think about all these issues, and who we may need input.
So, we have reached out to the fire department, we have reached out to the police department through this process. And there's a broader conversation in this, which is, how do you minimize fires on a site? How do you minimize vandalism on a site? How do you manage a site? And the answer, unfortunately, is typically you get a lot more people to go there. So you get more bodies, more eyes on a site in order to see it, which is also in contradiction to the goals set out in our management plan for Elk Rock Island and for Spring Park as a nature area, that we're trying to keep it in its natural habitat space. So, this part of this is a delicate balance of making sure that the goals associated with the park can be achieved, i.e. that you're creating the kind of natural habitat where you get the types of animals and the types of flora and fauna that you want, while also creating a safe buffer with the citizenry, and making sure that we are creating the kinds of interactions across the board that we're looking for. In an unrelated to this topic, but on a side note, I had the same conversation with the police chief yesterday, about how do we, you know, when we took on Elk Rock Island, we didn't take on a bunch of new money, neither did NCPRD. I really appreciated their willingness to take it on the cycle, but there is a discussion of, it is requiring us to invest more. We're asking that of NCPRD, as well as a lot of other priorities. So, that is something else when we come back to council that I think is fair for us to talk a little bit about, is just where are those funds coming from, and whether or not we're asking NCPRD to come to the table with those dollars, or the city is looking to invest those dollars in order to help make this possible.
I do have a question. In the master planning process around this, is there any conceptual idea for additional parking anywhere?
There was, yeah, there...
Actually, I think Councilor Beatty can answer some of this for you. I had this conversation with her today.
Well, there were, a decade ago, before the first, the pocket park was done, there was an effort by some of us in the neighborhood in conjunction with Joanne Harigal to go around and identify some pockets of where more parking could be.
There was circles on a map.
Yeah, and there's an actual, like, yeah, and actually 20th, if it would get regularly weed-whacked back, could, that parking situation could be better on 20th and less problematic for the neighbors if we regularly cut back all the BlackBerry so that there was more room for the lane of parking there to not be so far out in the, into the road. But there are some identified little pockets, but nothing that gets us, you know, big quantities of parking. There's six spaces here, and, you know, six spaces there, kind of thing.
So maybe 15 spaces or something to...
Yeah, I mean, 20th is what I see as the, yeah, the low-hanging fruit. Now, when the, when the city did the Von Arf discussion about Sparrow, there was a design that Denny did that had turned the 20th into, instead of being parallel parking, which is what it is now, to turn it into being, you know, front-end or angled parking, which would allow for more parking. I think there were some issues there about ADA accessibility, if we start expanding the pavement to do that, and so the costs...
Just the costs.
Yeah, the costs that that would bring to be able to do that. But anyway, there's, there have been, and, you know, if the property on 19th, what we, what the neighbors called the Smith property redevelops, depending on how it redevelops, there's a potential to actually build, I mean, what is now, looks like a driveway coming down from 19th is actually right-of-way, Ren Street right-of-way, and then there's an 18th Avenue right-of-way down there. And so there's potential to have some, you know, parking, build out those right-ways and have some parking down there in what would then be the Sparrow Street right-of-way down below, right? So, I mean, there are some places, but very little is easy and cheap.
Right.
They all come with a cost.
And that's, I'm more just opening this up broader than just this discussion, because I think that a lot of the concerns that have come up by both sides tonight have focused on some issues that we, as a city, would like to be able to address. I think there's some problems that we need to be able to tackle. All of them are going to require investment in order to tackle them. Right now on 19th, you have a parking situation that is blocking safety vehicles that we need to remedy, and we will be remedying in the coming weeks in order to make sure that you can get even our police cars through. So, we are, as staff, what I'm doing tonight, I think, in this moment, is acknowledging to you, we have a problem with or without this delineation, with or without these parcels, and I'm also committing to NCPRD that this is going to be a team effort in order to solve some of these issues that are going to keep growing and becoming harder to tackle.
Okay. Any other information that you will want?
Well, if we, if we happen to think of something else, can we, like, send a note to you and to Ann and...
Oh, of course, yeah.
On this also, and we'd like to know this, that, or the other thing.
Yes, and I just want to thank you and everyone in the audience for, you know, I am stepping into a conversation that's been underway for a while, and just hearing all the questions raised and all the issues raised is helping, I think, us as staff be better-informed about next steps and what we need to look for, so...
I appreciate everyone that came out tonight. You know, we, we deal with multimillion-dollar developments and STCs and issues and stuff, but really, sometimes it's this kind of issue that's the essence of local government, and so having you show up and give your points of view and some history is helpful to us. And if this were an easy issue, it would have been solved 15, 10 years ago. I know that some think it's very easy, it's not, but we're... It's not, but we're going to keep at it, and, and thank you for showing up. And I'd also ask that everyone remain civil as we look through this process.
Yeah, thank you, guys, all.
Yep. Good, all right.
Thank you, Stan.
We have. So another thing that's recently happened is the Friends of Elk Rock Island and Spring Park have kind of reinvigorated, so I just want to say thank you to them, because they are actually supporting us at both of these sites and the Neighborhood Association, the Neighborhood District Association, as far as taking on what I consider better stewardship of the site and ownership, positive ownership and conservation. And when we first put the educational interpretive sign at the Spring Park trailhead, we were worried that it was going to get vandalized really quickly, and there were going to be all these issues, and that sign hasn't gotten vandalized yet, and it's been up there for several years. So I do believe that with community support, especially friends groups and the neighborhood, the site is, does have some, what I would consider much more positive use than it had ago. So it is a positive thing, and thanks to the neighbors and the friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good, thank you. This will come back to us at some point in the near future.
Chapter two.
Thank you, Kelly.
Chapter 20.
Yeah.
After two anymore.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Tobacco Retail Licensing Agreement, a discussion which will be also presented by our Assistant City Manager, Kelly Brooks. She's got all the fun stuff.
She's actually just doing an introduction. Do you have your thumb drive?
Do you mind?
Yeah, no, I don't mind. So I'm going to do some technical support.
We have a packet on this?
No.
Okay.
No, there's nothing in there.
We, and so this, we had been contacted by our partners at Clackamas County to talk about some work that they're doing about protecting youth from access to tobacco. And at the time, I said, we're slammed, we can't come. We've got too many, too many booked agendas. And then we happened to have some things canceled out of this, this particular item, and they were kind enough to step in and offer to share some of the data that they have and some of the proposals that they're working through. And so that's really what we're here to do tonight. So I'm going to pop your presentation in and let you get started.
Very good. Well, thank you. Right? This might be the easy one.
Do you have any ideas for us on this?
None, none. Not on, not on record, anyway.
Can we just say yes? Go ahead and do it.
Oh, my goodness. Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to come in. We've, we've actually, so I'm Dawn Emmerich. I'm the Director of Public Health for Clackamas County. I've been here for two years. I moved here from Florida, so I'm still, this has just been fascinating, because I've learned a lot about your city tonight. So I'm, I'm actually really excited that we are here, because this is a pretty important policy. So public health, really, I'm just going to go on a little tangent, just a little bit. Public health is changing across the country. It's really becoming a very, it's evolving more out of the clinical world that public health has been known for, for a long time. And where it's evolving, especially in Oregon, which is the reason why I actually moved from Florida to Oregon, is because it's modernizing the way that we do public health here in the state of Oregon. And one of the things that public health authorities are doing more of is really getting into the policy world. And that's what I'm here to talk with you about tonight. Back in the day, public health, when we talked about tobacco, public health was very much into doing health promotion programs, smoking cessation programs. We do all this promotion to get people in. We might get five, and we might have one that might actually stop smoking. And so that's really kind of the old, traditional public health. Now, what we have found through the research is that the best way to reduce tobacco use is through policy. So that's why we're here, because we are looking to pass a local county policy, countywide policy, and we need your support on it. So let me give you a little bit of background. So here, here we go. In the last biennial session in Salem, there were two tobacco bills that were presented. One was Tobacco 21, which would be to get the age raised from 18 to 21 to purchase tobacco or any type of nicotine. That was getting it at par with alcohol and marijuana. So 21 for both of those, but it was 18 for tobacco. If you compare the three, tobacco is far more dangerous than the marijuana and alcohol. So we fought really hard to get that passed, so where that age was raised to 21. The second bill that was also presented was Tobacco Retail Licensing across the state. That one failed. This kind of put us in a little bit of a bind, because Tobacco Retail Licensing is the enforcement arm of Tobacco 21, but it failed. So how do you enforce retailers selling tobacco or nicotine products to anyone under the age of 21 if you do not know where they are? No one selling tobacco in the state of Oregon has to be licensed. So if you're not licensed, we don't know where you are selling tobacco, therefore we cannot enforce the Tobacco 21. So.
What in the world was the argument against that bill?
For retail?
Yeah.
They couldn't come to an agreement on the price point for licensing. They wanted to make sure that it was equal or equitable in the urban areas and rural areas across the state, and there just really wasn't any consensus. That's the big one. There's some nuances there, but that's the major one.
And they, but they did pass the 21?
Correct, and that went into effect in January.
Yeah, they did.
Yes. So that is in, that is in effect until, that started in January. So now, local counties can take that on. We said, okay. County commissioners here in Clackamas County really wanted to wait to see what, because we tried it two years ago, and the county commissioners liked it, but they were like, eh, let's see what the state's going to do. State didn't pass it. And so now we're bringing it back, and we've got a really great momentum, and we've got some good advocacy at the county administrator level and with county commissioners. So our role now, what we've been doing over the last several months, is really going out and doing our outreach to all the city, city councils and city managers and chambers and all that stuff. So you're probably city number six or seven. They're all running into one another, I have to say, especially at nine o'clock at night. But we've had really great success with the city council, with the city councils already. No one has said, no, we're not going to support you. Most of them said, yes, we will, and then some have said, yeah, this is a good idea, but we need to, we need to chew on it a little bit. So you're here. We're going to be speaking with Gladstone next week, and that will be all of the city councils across the county. Actually, with the exception of two. Lake Oswego said, we're good, they've got it. And Oregon City, we have not heard back from them, so we're still working to schedule something. But by and large, I'll just smile. So by and large, we have done a really good, got a really good job of outreach and, and getting people on board and to support this. So the objectives tonight are to explain the retail, tobacco retail at the local level, and then, again, get your support moving forward. This is not something that will go on a ballot for vote. If we can get all the cities to agree to have a resolution and support this, then it goes to the county commissioners for a vote. So let's go through this. So what is it? T R L. And if you're any, if you like my age, T R L is not the MTV show. It's not the same thing. That's what I always think about when I see T R L. Anyway, it requires a business to have that license, like we talked about, and retailer education and support, so this is not something that will just do a license and leave, you know, and be done with it, or be the bad regulator. This is also an opportunity to build those relationships with the businesses, do the education in terms of marketing, where to place it, how to avoid, where teenagers can't get it, and so forth. So we'll do a lot of education and support, the annual licensing fee, and then the enforcement system. The thing that I will mention to you that you may or may not know, public health has been in the business of regulation for a long time, specifically here in Clackamas, Clackamas County, you know, we're the ones that do the restaurant inspections. We do the pool inspections. We do daycare inspections. We do food tracking. This is our, our role. So according to the state law, one of our jobs as the public health authority is to enforce public health law. So it's our job. So the enforcement is a part of who we are and what we do. This is no different. So we have the infrastructure in place, we have the training in place, we have the policies in place. This would just be one more model that we would just expand into tobacco versus the restaurants. So we're really good at this, at this kind of work. The licensing fee, let me just back, yeah, that's okay. The licensing fee, I can tell you, we are only charging enough to pay for staff to do it. We don't want to have a policy where we can't then have, we can't enforce it, and it's kind of silly. That's what we're sort of here to do. Similar to our environmental health work, all of our regulatory work, there's our fees associated with that, and it is 100% covered with our staff. So there's no profit to be made. We really make sure that those fees are there just to pay for the staff, but nothing else. So that was a question that we had had before. Are you guys going to make money off of this? No. The state statute says that we can't do that anyway. So that fee that we would be charging would be able to cover two F T Es, and that's what we have deemed appropriate, to be able to enforce all of the tobacco retailers. So a little bit about some of the tobacco use that's happening. Remember, this is about our youth, okay? So this is not about the 55-year-old person who's old enough to make those decisions. We're talking about 14, 15, 16-year-olds. So Oregon Healthy Teen Survey in 2017, this is a survey that goes out to all of our schools, and it's a self-reported survey, but what was reported was that 11th graders in the last 30 days reported this. 25% of them have used tobacco product of some time within 30 days. 41% had used any form of tobacco before the age of 18, and then 1 in 3 youth said that it was very easy to get tobacco.
And when you say tobacco, does, I mean, are you including vaping products, or that's?
That's actually the scary part.
Different slide.
This is really talking about cigars and cigarettes.
Okay.
Not this.
Yeah.
And so I do want to show you this.
And chewing tobacco.
And chewing tobacco, correct. Correct. So when we see tobacco, that's including, that is the tobacco.
So not the picture on the bottom.
Yeah, so that's what this is. So this is all vape, and what we know to be true is that this is what's escalating considerably. So, and a little bit of information about the e-cigarettes and the vape is that it's nicotine, not tobacco. Because it is nicotine and not tobacco, this doesn't get taxed. So a lot of people will say, well, aren't you getting taxes from tobacco? Well, public health doesn't get that. Yes, it is taxed, but in the state of Oregon, those dollars do not come to public health. Wish it was. But anyway, these, because they're not tobacco, it's nicotine, doesn't even get taxed.
And is the legislature looking to change that?
So there's loopholes. We're looking to change that. So one step at a time, you know? So we want to get this tobacco retail licensing in placing in Clackamas, and then we definitely want to start ramping up our advocacy. But I want to show you this. May I approach?
I've never seen a vape like that.
Where's the microphone?
Yeah. Thank you. So this is the latest and the greatest. This is, is it on?
Yeah.
There we go. This is, all right. So what I'm going to show you is, this is the e-cigarette. Looks like a jump drive, right? Looks just like a jump drive. All you do is you stick this into your laptop, just like it's a regular jump drive. This goes, this is the charger, so it charges your, your vape. And you just put it right in there, so now it's charging.
Uh huh.
And then this is your flavor. So this comes in all different types of flavor. I happen to like creme brulee. It actually comes in creme brulee.
My granddaughter likes cotton candy.
So there's like bubble gum, there's watermelon, there's mint, and then there's creme brulee. But this is the flavor, and so this is the real problem with our youth, because this is what attracts our youth, is with the flavors. San Francisco actually is the first city in the country that just passed a law banning all flavored tobacco. You can't get it anywhere in the city.
Any age.
Any age.
Flavored tobacco or flavored nicotine?
Flavored nicotine and tobacco. Can't get it.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can't do that in Clackamas, but I'm just saying, so this is a real problem. So I'm going to pass this around, just so that you can see it, because a lot of teens are putting this in their computer, and they, mom and dad's not seeing anything.
Oh, no.
They think it's, they think it's their homework, right? So I'm going to pass this.
And then they suck on that?
Yeah.
Like. So the ones I'm used to, though, are way different than that. I mean, my granddaughter vapes, and, and it's.
It's like a pen.
And she puts, she puts juice in it.
Yeah. So, so this is an e-cigarette. The one that you're talking about is an actual, and they're all vapes.
Yeah.
This is what a lot of the teens are using, because they can stick it in their pocket, and mom and dad don't see it, and their caregivers don't see it, and it's a real problem. That's, that's what's kind of concerning. The nicotine that is put into those e-cigarettes are highly, highly, highly addictive. In fact, some of the research is showing that those vape pens and that vaping apparatus is more addictive than just traditional cigarettes. So you'll hear an argument from the lobby that will say, well, those are really great transition pieces from people who do smoke to transition to that. And what you don't understand is that that has more nicotine than the actual cigarettes, so you're still addicted. So now we're talking about the youth and the impact. Let me go ahead to the clinical piece.
So tell me what something like this costs.
Ooh.
We just looked it up this morning, didn't we?
Less than $20.
But then the juice is.
Yeah, that's what you have to keep purchasing, of course.
Mm-hmm.
And would this be also, you would need a license to sell this?
Correct. That is correct. So it is, and so what you will find in the lobbies, the lobby wants to separate the two. They want to say, no, nicotine is not tobacco. And so from us, from the public health perspective, we're, we're, no, they're together. So as long as they're together, you know, we can enforce it the same way.
Is this supposed to play something?
No, it's just a picture, so it may not be coming up.
Okay.
So there's just an article, what you don't see here is a picture that's not showing up, and it was just an article of a young man who was like 16 years old, who is using Juul, and he started vaping as a teen and now says the habit is impossible to let go. There's also an article that just was released in a peer-reviewed study of a young lady who was 17, had been vaping for about two years, and she had popcorn lung. 17, that's not anything that you can recover from. So she's, her life is, will never be the same at 17 because of vaping, not because of cigarettes, but because of vaping. So it's a real problem. So, well, I want to keep them going. I want to show you a map, and I don't need this anymore. I got a mic. Okay. So this is North Clackamas, so this is where Milwaukee is. One of the ways that public health looks at the county is that we have divided the county into 10 health equity zones. And to be clear, the 10 health equity zones are the school districts. Nothing fancy. So what you have here is the North Clackamas Health Equity Zone, and the green are the retailers that we know. The black are the, are the schools. And then this is laid over in poverty, and there's a reason why we did that. We know that there is a very clear correlation between where retailers are overlaid very, significantly over poverty, okay? So that, it's very clear, this is what the research shows, and then here in North Clackamas is absolutely in line with, with that. So you might say, well, Dawn, you just said you don't know where they are. So how do you know to map them if you don't know where they are? So our staff literally walked the entire county identifying tobacco retailers.
I mean, don't we know, doesn't the state know where they are, because they collect taxes?
Yeah, it's a great question, and one that we've heard before, and I have an answer for you. The answer is no, because the taxes that are on tobacco are coming from the wholesaler. So we don't know.
Okay.
We don't know. Great question. I was really happy I have the answer now. But you can see, again, there's no coincidence that it's in the high-density poverty areas and it's very close to your schools, all right? So that bottom picture is just that area zoomed in, as you can see. So there's just a ton of retailers right there in that area of poverty where young people are. So the next slide that I'm going to show you is exactly that. We wanted to say, okay, where are the people, where are the youth in your area? We wanted to say, okay, where are the, where are the youth in your area? So the darker, or the orange is where there's most density of young people, and the green is less. So for the most part, I mean, you don't have high, high numbers of youth, but you still have a significant area of yellow. But it just kind of gives you, again, look at the schools, look at the known retailers, and, and that association with the age under 21 in your particular area.
So the retailers, you're including like bars that have cigarette machines or whatever?
Yep, they do, they do fall in line with the enforcement.
Okay.
Yep. So just a little bit of, just kind of, I want to take you up a little bit to a higher level. So our job, again, is to scan, do the surveillance, and look at the data of the health of the county. Three top, the three top leading causes of death in our county, major cardiovascular disease, cancer, and chronic lower respiratory diseases. Every single one of them are tobacco-related. Every single one of them. So if we know this to be true, then the best way to be able to hit that number and decrease these deaths is to start looking at the prevention of our youth. That's what we're here for. Again, that 55-year-old is not our target for this. It is that 14-year-old that we don't want them to be the number-one stat in 40 years. And quite frankly, if they're cigarette-smoking, it might be 25 years, right? Or if they're doing any of that. So we want to make an impact on here, on these top three leading causes of death. Only way that we can do that is to deter as much as we can of our youth adopting this type of habit. And so, again, why do we want to do this? So why is this important? Again, I kind of mentioned it, it really is a deterrent for, for getting our youth away from tobacco and any of the nicotine. So as I mentioned, the state raised the legal age to 21. TRL is effective, it is very effective in decreasing the illegal tobacco sales to minors as well. In 2016, 17, 12 of 86 of the retailers, that's 14%, who sold tobacco to minors in the state's random inspections. So between 1995 and 2014, illegal sales to minors raged from 1.5% to 54.8% in the county. So we've got some wholesale, we've got some retailers that are still, that are still selling it to minors, and so we have an opportunity to really do some education there. So let's look at what's happening in the state. So we would not be the first in the state to have a local ordinance. We would be the fifth, and I'm very optimistic that we can do this. Benton County, Klamath, Lane, and Motonoma. Motonoma is the most recent to pass. I think they've only had it passed for, what, a year and a half?
Yeah.
Yeah, so their outcomes are not, we don't know yet how they're doing, because it's too soon, but Benton, Klamath, and Lane have been doing this for the longest. In fact, Benton has had this since the 1990s. I mean, they were way ahead of the curve. And so what we know is that the most effective policy is to do county-wide. If we don't do it any other way, then we're looking at unincorporated, and the research shows that that's not effective. If we're going to do this, we need to do county-wide. License fee to cover the education and enforcement, and then the public health authorities, that's who we are, we are best positioned to implement TRL. So, the next question always comes, "Well, isn't this going to cause loss of jobs? What's this, you know, regulation and policy, those types of things are, you know, job killers?" Well, we knew that question was going to probably come, so we contracted with Florida State. Oh, my gosh. What the heck happened?
It's the town.
Maybe it is. Portland State, go Knolls. Portland State University did an economic impact assessment for us, and so we said, "Please do this assessment, and let us know, is this going to have an economic hardship on the county?" Well, it was, it's very minimal, as you can see here. So a loss of four FTEs across the entire county if we were to implement this county-wide. Labor income, as it is right now, is over $204 million, but this would be about a loss of $129 million, I mean, $129,000. Very minimal impact. What does that mean for Milwaukee? So we drilled it down. Milwaukee would expect to see a .79 FTE loss, okay? And a decrease in gross wages of $24,000. So relatively speaking, if you're talking about overall county of 7,127 FTE employees, and Milwaukee's still very, very, very small.
That assumes no increase in price to accommodate.
Yeah, and that's what will probably happen. That's what we are seeing in the other counties, is that that retailer is pushing that cost off to the purchase of the cigarette, which is okay by us, too.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Which is okay by us, too.
Yeah.
So, so that kind of is it, and, you know, we, I mean, we just really think this is the right thing to do. This is, we think that we have a common thread with you. We care about our young people. And, again, out of all the three areas of tobacco, alcohol, and marijuana, tobacco is the worst, and, but we've kind of lost it a little bit. The marijuana and alcohol seems to be getting a lot of the attention, and we're kind of forgetting about tobacco and nicotine, and we really shouldn't. So we're here to ask you for your support, and if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them now.
A couple of questions. When you mention the loss of FTEs, you're saying if, if you impose this license, some retailers will have to close? What's the FTE loss? I'm not...
Um, the FTE loss would be that out of all the retailers that you have in Milwaukee, you would see, I don't remember the number.
.79.
Thank you. That's the number of job, you...
Jobs.
Jobs, job loss that you would see.
I said retailers, but I meant an employee.
Yeah.
.79.
Correct. That's if they didn't pass the cost along to their customers. Correct. So in actuality, in those counties that have done this, they probably haven't seen any decrease in employment, they've just simply passed the cost.
Correct.
And that's divided between how many retailers in Milwaukee?
In Milwaukee, I have that number. It is, you have 22 tobacco retailers in Milwaukee, the most of any city in the county.
So you're talking probably...
The most, really?
We're the most.
Yep.
We're the biggest, it's a big population.
They're more dense.
I'm from your area.
We're nowhere near one, Oregon City. Oh, in North Clackamas, not in the whole county.
No. In, in the city, well, through the retail assessment, we confirmed 22 tobacco retailers in Milwaukee, the most of any city, so it's probably your city, your city, um, guide, boundaries, city by, in the county.
In the county, not just in that North Clackamas?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because, I mean, yeah, we're far from the, yeah.
So 22 retailers, yeah.
Us, we go, and Oregon City are both way, way bigger cities, so that's interesting.
Are you seeing any kind of opposition, I mean, the formal opposition to, you know, the restaurant?
Not yet.
Or grocery store associations?
No. No, and we kind of, we're anticipating that.
Like that.
We're anticipating that the more that we're out here public, yeah, we're surprised that we haven't seen it yet. But I, I think, I think we'll probably get it the day that we present this to the county commissioners. We're anticipating it.
You said also that you've done some presentations, or talked to folks at chambers of commerce, so often I find that chamber of commerce members are on a different side of the fence than a lot of the jurisdictions are, so I just was curious about what kind of reception you're getting from the chambers.
So the first initial reaction that we had with, the largest one...
Yes.
Was, "No, we'll never support it." I said, "Well, you didn't even give us a chance to even talk to you about it." So we have that scheduled. We have that scheduled for the first week of September.
Is that at the public policy meeting?
Um, I'm not really sure.
First Monday in September?
You know, I have to say, it's, it's, hold on, it's not even actually September. It's all, because I know that I have a conflict.
Hmm, that's okay, we can...
I can't remember when it is, but it's soon. It's very, very soon. Oh, it's actually, it's September 12th.
Yeah, okay.
Ding ding ding, September 12th. So here's a couple of things. Number one, there are really good examples of chambers of commerce supporting tobacco policy. They get it, because it's an economic issue. It's a workplace issue, right? So they understand the business tie. The most significant one is Kansas City. So Kansas City Regional Chamber of Commerce, their entire platform is about Tobacco 21. They are leading Tobacco 21 in Kansas City. Not the Health Department, not the hospitals, the chamber is.
The business community.
The business community rallied around that, because they saw the business case for the illnesses, for work, for the workforce, right, of being sick by tobacco. They get it, they let it, and they're going to pass that, and the chamber is going to take full credit, and 100% they should. So our staff have been participating, even though we're past Tobacco 21, we've got that passed, we've been participating on their conference calls. They have welcomed us, because we're trying to understand, "How is it that you can do this?" We've got to be able to convince our chambers to do the same thing. In fact, the vice president of Kansas City Chamber is going to be coming here in April of next year, and we're going to do a big community business thing, so that people understand that business and public health does not have to be this way. There is a connection. So that's the one thing. And we were really being proactive to, to really engage our chamber. And I guess the only other thing that I'll mention to that is, for me personally, coming from Florida, where I was from, I was a member of the chamber. I was on our Board of Governors. I personally get it, so I think that I have a little bit of street cred, if you will, to kind of say, you know, we don't have to be adversaries. So our Public Health Division has not really engaged in the chamber movement I have, so I feel very comfortable with that. And so, yeah, the president and I, she had a very quick reaction to me, but it's like, "Hold on, let's go get some coffee, let's talk about this a little bit, let me make the case, and then we can decide." So I think that meeting's going to be really important. I mean, I would, I would love, I know that some of you are probably members of this biggest chamber that we're talking about.
Past president.
Think I know? I would love...
As a CEO for 14 years.
I would love for you to come with us.
I'm still a member.
Right?
I'll be there.
I would love for you to come with us and say...
No.
Oh, yeah, the law, the productivity-related cost to tobacco is $91 million, and the medical cost is $118 million.
That's crazy.
That is a bottom-line impact to businesses, if I don't know any.
Yeah.
It just is.
I know. I have a mother-in-law who died of lung cancer, man, I'm there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would, I would love for you to join us.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would, it would make, it would really make the case to our friend at the chamber, who's a fellow member of my Rotary as well, so...
Yeah, I noticed a little Rotary pin there.
Yes, yes, yes.
You should really join Milwaukee.
Also the president of that.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness, that's so funny. Well, we have, we have four of our staff members that are member of the Rotary. Yeah, we believe in it, you know? Well, it's like, it's, what is it, polio, right? So why wouldn't public health be involved in Rotary?
Exactly.
Anyway.
Anyhow.
Yes.
Well, and I noticed that the fee is somewhere between $500 and $600, and you pointed out in your literature that that's less than $2 a day, no matter which way you cut it, for the retailer.
And $12 a pack for a small retailer to recoup them.
Yeah, it's minimal. And, you know, again, we've got to, we've got to pay our expenses, and that's only for two, we're not growing government, it's just two FTEs. You know, technically we are, but it's not big. It's two FTEs to do the enforcement, but we feel like that's a great investment of taxpayer dollars to get youth to stop smoking.
And so, do you want a resolution from us, or you just want to...
We would love a resolution from you, yes.
Knot of heads tonight, or what?
And we have samples that we can give you.
Okay, so you'll give us some samples?
Yes, we can send one out tomorrow. Yep.
Okay. All right, I don't think you've got any opposition here.
Are we against it, are we?
Wonderful. Good. Well, thanks. See, wasn't this a great way to end the night? See?
Oh, it's not over.
It's over.
We still have more agenda.
I do have a couple of other questions I wanted to ask, or a comment I wanted to make, which, one is, I went to, I went on vacation to Australia this spring, and the bars in Australia that have cigarette machines, they're kind of little narrow machines, I don't know what cigarette machines actually look like anymore in our bars. I haven't actually seen one.
I haven't seen one in years.
But they say, in giant letters, "Smoking Kills," and then the buttons for the brands are just white buttons with black type, no pictures, no logos, no nothing. And I'm like, "We need to do that, you know, make it less..."
I saw the same thing. I just came back from Peru, and when I got into the Peruvian airport, their whole, what is it?
I remember that.
The no-tax, what is it called?
Duty-free.
Thank you, I couldn't think of it. So anyway, same thing. And I was like, "Oh, this is awesome." Yes, and I went to go and take a picture of it, and the security told me, "No picture, no picture."
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, interesting. But anyway.
And one other thing, which is not cigarette-related, but since you're in the Health Department, I wanted to bring up a pet issue of mine, which is drug disposal sites. You know, we have them in our police station, and I guess most of the police stations have them, but that's a 9:00 to 5:00 thing, you know? A Monday through Friday thing. It's not available on the weekends. How do we get more of these dispos, and it seems to be, I actually have an invention in my head for, for doing a machine that could just go in every supermarket and every, you know, place. How do we get more drug disposal sites?
We can talk to you a little bit about that, so why don't we, we're going to do a follow-up email to everyone, and we'll talk with you about it. We do have those, especially because of our opioid work. So we already have some of those located throughout the county, but we'll talk with you to see how we can help you out.
Okay. I mean, I'd love to have a place that's, you know, 24 hours, or at least open on weekends, pharmacies.
Pharmacies makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Terrific. We'll follow up with you.
Great.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Please go use an e-cigarette up here. Other, yes.
Oh, yeah. I thought maybe I'd take that vape home to my kid. Never mind.
All right. Clackamas County Water Environmental Services, differential sewer rates discussion, and this is going to be presented by Ann Ober.
Yeah, this is going to be really brief. So I've been in touch with all of you, just to let you know that I've had a request from the county administrator, Dawn Krupp, and then Councilor Adma has also had a discussion with the advisory board to Wes around the same topic. They're asking us whether or not the city has concerns with our residents paying what is basically the right-of-way fees for other cities. So there's been a request by one of the cities that the cost of the right-of-way fee that they're assessing on the customers and on the waste stream that goes through their city be assessed to all of the residents of the district. And I have made an assumption to date that the city would not be interested in paying the right-of-way fees for other cities. However, I think we need to make that formal. So they are asking for a letter to be drafted and signed by the mayor, basically outlining that the city would not be supportive of that rate being assessed to our residents. But it's a question to you, are you comfortable with that? But it's a question to you, are you comfortable with that? And if not, can the mayor sign?
Well, we were just talking earlier about the fact that we don't charge that kind of right-of-way fees.
Right.
So I don't see why we would.
Why would we pay?
Why would we pay it?
I'll tell you what. What the mayor of the city pushing it would say is that a utility can't have differential rates within its district. It can't charge a resident of one place one thing and a resident of another, so he believes it's illegal not to do it that way. The, of the five cities in West, three do right-of-way fees, two of us don't, and no one else is supportive of transferring those fees. So they have been pass-throughs.
So the other cities charge West a right-of-way fee?
Yes, to use their streets, just as we had the discussion earlier tonight that we don't do that. So Oregon City, Happy Valley, and West, and Gladstone do that. And what West has done is just take the cost that Oregon City's charging and pass it right on to the Oregon City residents alone. The mayor would like that to be spread amongst the entire district.
I did receive a letter today, or yesterday, from the City of Gladstone. They've gone through the same conversation. They do assess a right-of-way fee, but they do not support actually having that fee being paid by other cities, so they are not requesting that of us. So just to pass...
And neither does Happy Valley support it either. It's really just the one.
One city?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, well, anyway. I didn't, when I gave you the update of our last West meeting, what I didn't say is that two days later, Oregon City said they would no longer participate in these meetings, because they didn't find them fruitful, until some sort of governance issue is resolved, which won't be anytime soon. So we're not really sure how to proceed with one of the five cities not wanting to participate anymore.
Probably quickly.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, I think, yeah, who wants to pay their fee? No. I mean, our ratepayers are already on the hook for a lot, so, yeah, I would not want to pass that fee on to them.
No differing views. Okay. Perfect. The mayor will be signing a letter probably tomorrow and sending that. Thank you.
All righty, so I have a page and a half.
He did say it was extensive.
A survey is now live on the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov about the draft locations and concepts for 10 proposed neighborhood hubs. Please go online to let us know what you think. The survey will close on August 27th. If you don't know what neighborhood hubs, what neighborhood hubs are, please visit the webpage, which includes a lot of background information about how the idea was developed. The Arts Committee is currently accepting proposals for three new sculptures for the City Hall Sculpture Garden. For more details, visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. Neighborhood concerts continue this week. Llewellyn's Concert in the Park tomorrow, Wednesday, August 8th, features Norman Sylvester, the original Northwest Boogie Cat. The show begins at 6:30 at Ball-Michelle Park, located at Stanley Avenue and Willow Street. Ardenwald's Next Concert in the Park is this Thursday, August 9th, featuring Ten O'Clock Hill. The show begins at 7:00 PM at Ardenwald Park, located across Roswell Street from Ardenwald Elementary School. The Linwood Neighborhood will hold their annual Linwood Community Day from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM this Saturday, August 11th. The event will kick off with an Adopt-A-Road cleanup along Linwood Avenue from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. After the cleanup, the neighborhood will hold a free neighborhood lunch from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Stanley Park, which will include the NCPRD, Rec-Mobile, and other fun activities. Another great event this coming Saturday, August 11th, is the Taste of Milwaukee, Milwaukee's first beer festival. The event will include over 30 craft beers and ciders, local vendors, food, art, and live music. All ages are welcome. Volunteers are needed at the event who have their OLCC cards. In exchange for a shift, volunteers will receive a number of benefits, including a t-shirt, free entry, and beer tokens after the first shift. And more. To learn more about the event, including how to volunteer, visit www.tastemilwaukee or follow the event on Facebook. The Hector Campbell Neighborhood will hold their annual public, or annual picnic on Monday, August 13th, beginning at 6:30 PM, at the former grounds of Campbell Elementary School. The event will include free food, games, and more. If you plan to attend, please RSVP to info@hectorcampbellda.org, so that they, so that they plan to have the right amount of food. Everyone who RSVPs and attends will be entered into a raffle to win some great prizes. Save the date for the Milwaukee Bay Park Kickoff Celebration on Friday, August 24th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the park. This party in the park will launch the final design phase for the park and celebrate the many park improvements made over the last 10 years. The event will include live music, the NCPRD Rec-Mobile, and opportunities for you to share your ideas. In the meantime, please go online through August 31st to take, August 31st, to take a brief survey about the final design phase to share your ideas. The survey can be found at milwaukeebaypark.org. Some other save-the-dates include, the 11th Annual Johnson Creek Cleanup takes place on Saturday, August 25th, from 8:45 AM till noon. Register to volunteer at www.jcwc.org. The Downtown Milwaukee Historical Walk, sponsored by AARP Neighborhood Walks, and the Milwaukee Historical Society is on Saturday, August 25th, from 10:00 AM till noon, beginning at the Leitting Library. The Island Station Neighborhood will hold their annual picnic on Saturday, August 25th,